I'm going to call the Willet City Council meeting to order on the September 11th at 6:30 PM if you'll all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Councilman Connie Strong.
Yes.
Jerry Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzales.
Present.
Mayor O'Leary. Present. All right, we have an off agenda item. I'm looking for a motion to add item, an item to 9E. It would be to amend the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA, project's budget table to allow for the asbestos remediation and flooring upgrade project at the community center.
I would so move it there.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Would anybody from the public like to address us about adding the item? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Strong. Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzales.
Yes.
Mayor O'Leary. Yes, all right, the item has been added to the agenda on 9E. And with that, we'll move to public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to address us on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on to public matters. We have a proclamation in a moment of silence in remembrance of September 11th. I had the honor, and I know Supervisor Hascheck, and Matthew Alameez is here today as well, and we were all in attendance. Thank you, both of you gentlemen, very much. We had the opportunity to attend the raising and discussion about 9/11. And I know that when we were standing there discussing it, there were moments where you could imagine yourself back in that moment. And so it's really important that we keep talking about it and we learn from history and we try to make the world a little safer. Anyway, I'm going to read the proclamation of the Willet City Council recognizing the National Day of Service and Remembrance and commemorating Patriot Day, a day to remember September 11th, 2001. Whereas today, September 11th, 2024, marks the 23rd anniversary of the terrorist attacks sustained by the United States, which will live forever in the memory of all Americans. And whereas the tragic loss of 3,016 lives on that day in New York City, at the Pentagon, and in Pennsylvania must never be forgotten. Whereas many emergency service workers sacrificed their lives in a courageous effort to save the men, women, and children who were innocent victims of this act of terrorism. And whereas nations around the world must work together to address global terrorism so that all citizens of the world may live free of fear. And whereas an appropriate way to commemorate those who lost their lives in the terrorist acts of September 11th, 2001 is through the annual celebration of their living, including promoting global peace and goodwill, demonstrating to resolve and eradicate terrorism, advancing responsible citizenship, encouraging patriotism and love of country, and honoring the courage of the human spirit. So now therefore, I, Suprema Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of Willets, along with Vice Mayor Jerry Gonzales, councilmembers Greta Connie, Mad Strong, and Larry Stransky, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2024 as Patriot Day and issue this proclamation to memorialize those men, women, and children who've lost their lives in the terrorist acts of September 11th, 2001. I further encourage all citizens of Willets to remember and honor those whose lives were taken without cause on that tragic day, as well as the families and the loved ones who suffered the devastation of those losses. And with that, I'm going to ask everyone if we could just take a moment of silence. All right, I know that was heavy and a little hard to move on from. Our next order of business is to recommend Olga O'Neill for the Library Advisory Board. During Vice Mayor Gonzales's time as the mayor, he appointed Olga to the Library Advisory Board, and I feel that she's done an excellent job for our community, very appreciative for advocating for libraries in Willets and throughout the county, and so, and recommending her for the Library Advisory Board.
Do we need a motion?
That's a good question. I don't believe so, because generally the mayor appoints. Just looking if anybody would like to say any words, or should you have any objections?
I fully recommend it, since I've recommended it before, and at the same time, she was a longtime teacher, principal, and has been in the community for a long time, and raised her kids, I think great kids now, so very vested in the community, and I think she's a good representative of the city to have her on the Library Board.
Agreed.
I think it's that she'll do an excellent job. She did a good job for the schools, and I was one of the people that took advantage of it when they brought the high school, it's a good job that she had done. Thank you.
She couldn't be here this evening, I believe it was her daughter's birthday, otherwise she would have been here. But she said she's honored to serve in this role and appreciates that she's been entrusted with it. Is there anybody from the community that wants to comment on this item? All right, hearing none, she's been appointed to the Library Advisory Board for another term. Next, we have the update from the 3rd District County Supervisor, John Hascheck.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, County, or City Council Manager. Sorry, I have a bit of a cold, so. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your proclamation about 9/11. You know, today was, it's a very moving ceremony. When you think about, you know, the people locally who run towards danger, you know, the police departments, the fire departments, who go towards those scenes that we want to avoid and hope never happen, but they do. And that's, we have people in our community that are doing that every day, so really recognition of that kind of community spirit is really important. And I think Olga O'Neill, you know, I've interacted, I've taught with her in the schools, and then also, you know, her relationship with me as the liaison to the library, you know, she does a great job in advocating for the libraries and what the county should be doing, and always lets me know when something's needed. Speaking of the libraries, we just passed the, excuse me, the contract for the engineering firm that's going to do the roofing and the solar panels on the library. So that got passed yesterday, so that work should start commencing. You know, they got to do a study of the roof to make sure that it's, it can support the solar panels, and then they'll get to the roofing it and putting on the panels, so that should be done in the near future, we're hoping, hoping but not promising before the rainy season. Okay? That was the update I got from Government Services. So, along with the library, you know, recognition of the Covelo Library, which I know is not here, but they got recognized as the greatest small-town library in America. And it's really for their work in creating resiliency, you know, they're the place for information, and any, when there's an emergency there, they do Seed Library, they do all sorts of things for the community, the radio station, the farmer's market, the community forums. Oh, sorry. And so, great recognition there, something good in our neighborhood. We're working on a noise ordinance, and it will be brought to the board on the 24th. And so, if there's any feedback that you want to give me about what you think should be in a noise ordinance, let me know, because it's something new. We've done the vegetation ordinance, and that didn't have that much teeth in it, so we've had to rework it. We want to get this noise ordinance right, because there's a lot of people who are affected by, you know, noises and parties and all that kind of stuff that people just happen to have in, outside of the city limits, I know. The brick grant, we got awarded the brick grant, which is the Building Resiliency and Infrastructure in Communities. And so, it was a $50 million grant. We got awarded like the 2.6 million for planning, but that will have an effect because it's mostly up in the Sherwood Road, Brook Trails area. But the airport has, was part of that grant too, so we'll be working together on that, because there's some tree clearing and all that kind of, you know, vegetation management stuff around the airport. The Puff, we had the groundbreaking for the psychiatric hospital facility on August 21st. It's down in Ukiah, past the airport, South Ukiah, on Whitmore Lane and South State Street. And so that should be completed in like 400 days now. So we're looking at the fall of 2025. And it's originally budgeted at 19.5 million. We thought with inflation it would go up to 22 or 23 million, but we got a grant for 9.6 million, and then the request for proposal for construction bid came in at 13 and a half million. So, maybe out of pocket for the county will be about 4 million, we're hoping. And that would be great, because that's all funded with the Measure B money, the taxes that people have been paying, right? Let's see, in, at the next board meeting, I'll be talking about campaign finance limits for campaigns, and so I'm proposing that, right now, the state limit's 5,500. We're looking at maybe $1,000 or so per individual contribution to a candidate. Humboldt does it, Sonoma County does, has limits like that, so. Let's see, you might have heard about the cannabis ordinance, you know, there was a new interpretation by the County Council saying that you can have two permits, which would actually double the size of cultivation space. So instead of the $10,000, $10,000 square foot limit, it would be up to 20,000. And that was with a plain reading of the ordinance, and so it was kind of a loophole. And so I thought that the board needed to make a decision, because it's a policy decision, so we made that decision yesterday to go back to the original intent of limiting it to 10,000 square feet, because that's what people have been thinking that was the limit for the last six years, so. Okay, and I've had a couple meetings with Amtrak, you know, their, the bus service that they provide between Arcata and Martinez, which stops in Willets, it also stops in Leightonville and Leggett. They wanted to cut out the service to this area. And so Supervisor Jurdie, who represents from Spy Rock North, and I represent up to Spy Rock, so certainly Leightonville and Willets, we had a meeting with Amtrak and said that it was necessary to keep these routes open, that there be stops here, at the very minimum stops where, you know, they didn't have to stop if they knew no one was going to be in Leggett, but if a person had a reserved ticket, they should be stopping, right? And so the outcome we got was that there will be one stop per day in Willets and one stop in, instead of the two stops that they have currently, but they're going to one stop in Willets per day, and then one stop, and on the other days, well, at the other time, because there's two bus trips per day, that the other times, they'll be stopping in Leightonville and Leggett. So, I know that probably is very confusing right now, but we were able to do the best we could with, and appreciated their input and, you know, willingness to listen to us. And Suprema, I know that you would have been there if you didn't have a prior commitment, but. And then there is also talk about the raises, the salary raises for supervisors, is that we had to do the second vote on it yesterday. I voted no on it, because I said that we should be waiting until we have a structurally balanced budget. And we don't have a structurally balanced budget, because we're using one-time-only money right now. And so I voted no on the increase, but it passed anyway. There were two no votes, it was a three to two vote, so. And then I just wanted to let you know that the Mobile Outreach Unit that can reach out to people who are having emotional crises, that it is operational 24/7 at this point. So, so if there is a crisis of some kind that needs to be dealt with, with a kind of a behavioralist type approach, you know, that that's available. And then we had a Redwood Region Rising, which is about economic development. The meeting was in Willets. It was in early August, I think, or late July. Anyway, it was, it's interesting for me to see all the commonalities we have with the other counties around, so Lake County, Humboldt, and Del Norte. We all have very similar economic stressors on us, you know, but we also have issues with healthcare, and with transportation, and with, you know, workforce development, and, you know, investment, and creating, you know, niche manufacturing or things like that. You know, all of our counties are in the same kind of boat, and so the good part is that we're working together now and trying to identify those areas and move forward with promoting some of that economic development. And that's it, if there's any questions.
You've been busy.
Well.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Actually, John, I know that you deal with Amtrak, and I'm assuming Greyhound has gone out of business, is that correct?
Right, as of, I think, June 31st.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And even though Amtrak is eliminating one stop per day, Willets won't be impacted, because if you recall, we have the new service that runs from Humboldt County that comes through Willets and goes through, so public transportation is filling the gap, so even though we're losing one pickup stop, customers will, or people who are trying to find transportation will still be able to get their needs met.
Yeah, that was our last discussion, was that Humboldt Transit Authority provides that service from Eureka.
Yeah.
Down to Ukiah. And so, but the line that they're running, like, is at about the exact same time as the Amtrak service that was going to stop in Willets. So I was trying to get them to use the, switch it around so that we had two different opportunities to get on the bus going to Eureka, right?
Well, I just have to say, I'm very appreciative that when MTA reached out to you, both you and Supervisor Jurdie were very responsive in getting on board with lots of last-minute meetings to advocate for the north part of the county.
Yeah.
A lot of people, that is their lifeline, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Let me see if there's anybody from the public, does anybody from the public have any questions? All right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to the Notice Public Hearing. So next, we'll have a review and possible adoption of the City of Willet's Emergency Operation Plan. It's Part 1 Basic Plan. Our presenting staff member will be Logan Shine, who is our contract planner.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Logan Shine, I'm a contract planner, and I'm presenting this resolution to adopt the Willet's Emergency Operations Plan, Part 1 Basic Plan, on behalf of the Administration Now, the overview of a basic plan, according to FEMA, is basically, this is an overview of a jurisdiction's response, organization, and policies. What we would do is this plan explains the general concept of operations for all emergencies, not specific emergencies, and assigns responsibilities to departments for specific actions. It cites legal authority on page 31, Attachment 1, federal and state legislation that supports the Emergency Operation Plan. Locally, defines the roles of city staff, public-private partners in response to man-made or natural disaster incidents, according to Willet's Municipal Code 244040, and grants limited proclamation authority to the city manager, director of emergency services, to mobilize resources for seven days until a city council vote is required to ratify a proclamation of emergency in 244110. The alignment with regional and state systems, this aligns with the Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan from 2021 in the county operational area. It fits with the Counter-Operational Area Plan and the Strategic Emergency Management The initial draft of this was reviewed by County OES, and it fulfills the Willet's Municipal Code 244180 Emergency Plan, that the city emergency plan will reflect all requirements to ordinate activities in conjunction with the Operational Area Emergency Plan. Such plan shall take effect upon adoption by resolution of the city council. And this would fulfill the City of Willet's 2021 Council Goal for the Police Department, Goal 1, Item 2, to interact with the city's emergency partners to complete an Emergency Operations Plan that will reflect the city manager as chief emergency officer. The organizational chart with the city manager as the EOC Director is listed, is shown here, this is part of the plan, and it grants oversight of administrative functions, operations, planning and recovery, logistics and finance. It further spells out the authorities of who has primary authority and who is a supporting role for specific tasks in response for emergencies. This plan will require annual maintenance. At the beginning of this document, there are revision history tabs, and it will be revised annually based on new information from partners and staff and emergency exercises. Revisions are going to be shared with County OA, the OES, and all of the public-private partners, and a council vote is required to certify when substantial revisions have been made. A plan annex for specific disaster types such as dam failure, flood inundation is adopted. And a council vote is a viable and efficient way to publicize these edits to all of your Upcoming edits to this plan, if adopted, would become, would be coming in the fiscal year 2025, '26. The Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 was created in coordination with the Mendocino County Office of Emergency Services, local city districts, and the Mendocino County Office of Education. Revisions to the Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan are upcoming in 2025, and changes may require substantial edits to incorporate into the Willet's Emergency Operations Plan. The city council will have to approve these changes when they are adopted. And these updates would be to Attachment 3, Page 34, and they will require updates to the relevant sections. Any questions? Yes?
I feel that personally, that the city manager, I'm sure, can handle it the best that he can, but I think he needs more help. And I just, if we have an earthquake, there's going to be a lot of places to go and a lot of things to do. And I think that Brian is going to need some help to be able to handle the things that he needs to handle, or a fire, you know, that's going to take the town down or whatever. He's only one person. And so I think that he ought to have some kind of basis with, you know, the people in the community, or councilmen, or whatever, council ladies, to help him out. And I don't see anything that says anything like that.
Okay. The Willet's Municipal Code does grant authority to the city manager, emergency coordinator, to appoint an emergency coordinator to do this semi-full-time, to work with partners and make sure that emergency response services are adequate. That situation, or that position does not currently exist, but that authority is there for the city manager.
So whatever we say doesn't make any difference, because it's all in, written down, and so that's the way it is.
According to the authorities that grant the...
Who are these authorities?
FEMA, the state operations.
Are you, are you talking to them along anybody's, has anybody ever said this to you, that people would need help to do this?
Oh, yes. This defines the roles of every city employee, as well as our public and private partners.
Could I add something?
I was going to as well, go ahead.
So, so how this works is it uses the ICS system, and so, while Brian is on paper to head, he basically then gets to appoint help as needed, and that's how these things work in an emergency, fires, follows what the fire system does, is you can scale up and scale down. Kind of like when we had the fires here a couple years ago, the city manager brought in folks and staff, and had the ability to bring more staff in. I think the only issue I have is that it is just that, it's a basic plan, and I was prepared to adopt it today because it fulfills the requirement, but I don't want to fool us that we probably do need to have some addendums in there, that we've dealt with fires before, and we should probably be looking at evacuation routes and have those sort of things placed in the, as addendums, so that we don't have to try and do this on the fly. I remember working with Dusty, one of the last fires, as we were trying to figure out what happened if Brook Trails ended up pouring into Willets, and how we would get people out of town. And granted, you can't plan for every situation, because in that particular case, north of town was closed, we knew we had to head up south. There are times when you can't take them west, because that's closed, and there are times when maybe both, all accesses to town have been closed in the past. And so I think what this does is it follows the ICS system and allows us to either shrink up, or basically take it up or take it down.
Correct, you're allocating resources with, and one more, so to your point on having hazard-specific plans, those are defined as annex plans?
Yeah.
Those would have to be, it's advised to, following the FEMA guidelines for emergency operation planning, those annexes can be developed from the actual departments, that would be like the water department, if they are going to be dealing with water ruptures, specific disaster plans for wild land urban interface would be done in partnership with...
I just, I guess my thing is, I want to make sure that, speaking to what Larry's talking about, that we can come up with a lot of what-ifs, but if the situation is that if we put this plan on the shelf and say we fulfilled our legal requirement, I think we're kidding ourselves, because I think my conversation with Kathy earlier was, I think we need to adopt this so that we're legal, but have, basically have our eyes wide open that... wide open that we, there's still more work to be done, both at the staff level and community level. And I think that we have our CERT groups out there that have been in operation for a while, and having aware in the past, we had partnerships with some of the churches and the schools have been evacuation centers in the past, and someone needs to go through and basically dust off the cobwebs and say, are those still viable places to send people so that when Brian requests the help, that we know that, hey, we can't send them to the Baptist church anymore, they don't have those facilities, or we can't send them up to Beth Rock Gym because they don't have showers, or whatever the situation is, that we planned that ahead of time. Especially now that, I mean, we're right in the middle of fire season, and we can't kid ourselves that, you know, just because we have a new updated plan, it doesn't have all the answers.
And through the chair, if adopted, what would council like to see next?
I'll chime in.
Okay.
I understood that this was a legal requirement, you might say, but I believe the intent of the council, when we had discussed it a couple of years back after we had some severe fires and wanting emergency operation plan, was we wanted a deeper dive, which is also what Councilmember Stransky is referring to. We want to know that we have a plan. Some of the challenges we had, for example, we had a fire in the middle of the night, but we didn't have access to the emergency trailer out there. How, if there was another emergency, how could we, who would be our contact, and how could we expedite that? Upper Brook Trails, Tamara had reached out to try and coordinate all of the people that were flooding down Brook Trails. Where could they go? I want to see, as a partner, what does their evacuation plan look like if there was a fire up there? How would they be dispersing people? What would the, at the bottom of the hill, like, what would be the policy, the procedure, and the priority as to which direction we might be sending people? Those types of things, that's really what I was looking for in the plan. Even though I get that this is the foundation, I think what we're expressing is that we like this, but can we expand on that and this not be the end of the conversation? We want to make sure that we've got the, I want a directory, for example. Crisis, crisis happens, I go right over, I grab the book, I know who the updated contacts are, and we can reach out, they have our numbers, we're all in agreement that this is the plan that we're using within our community, not just the city of Willets, but our partner agencies and groups. Is that kind of what you were asking for too, Larry? Yeah, I think so. So that was one of the questions I had here, so I appreciate that. And then I just wanted to point out that on Page 15, it's very minor, but it says, insert link. We just want to make those updates there on Page 15. And then, Page 15, it just says, insert link, is all. It's not a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then, again, under mass care and shelter, I get that this is a foundation, but wanting to know what the plan would be. And then also, I think the last time we had the fire, council was receiving lots and lots of questions, and I know that Larry and I had shared this feeling that we, people sought us out. They wanted answers, they wanted questions, but council didn't actually have a defined role. And this emergency operations plan talks a lot about city staff, and then it says, council will help as needed. But who do you think that they're calling? All of our neighbors are calling us. So we really should have some kind of defined role where we can receive information and disperse information as council members.
Such as a public information officer?
What's that?
Such as a public information officer or other type of...
It could be an established protocol for regular meetings at a certain time during an emergency. We should be, we should, council should be meeting once a day on an emergency basis when there is an emergency. And should be, all council members should be fully informed and be able to help disperse information. And, you know, for example, if there's a need at the shelter, there should be, in my opinion, there should be a council member there hoping to give out information. It isn't always just about shelter. It can be just information on lots of different things that we maybe are privy to because we're close to the source of what's taking place. So those are, that's just some feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Along those lines, I was thinking that there should be some clarification about Brown Act and Phone Tree. You know, it does indicate that the city manager's responsibility is to establish and maintain contact with council members during an emergency, but that's a lot of extra work for Brian in the midst of a crisis. So there ought to be some kind of plan for how the phone tree works. Brian tells the mayor, and then how does the mayor disseminate the information, and how do we do that in a way that doesn't contradict the Brown Act? And so I do think that there should be some clarity about how information is dispersed during an emergency situation. It should be codified somewhere, not something we have to think of on the fly in the midst of an emergency. I had some other concerns about this, but I think my primary one has been addressed by other council members, and essentially, it's, plans are great, but implementation is the key. And Brian has heard me say that a million times, and I know that's something that he takes seriously. And so, yes, I get it, as Suprina said, this is a requirement. We've got to, you know, cross off this box in order to be in compliance and in order to go for any grants that could help us with emergency planning. But I just don't want this, again, just to echo everyone else, something that sits on a shelf. It really needs to be a living document, and everyone needs to be up to date on how to implement it. I liked, there were several areas in this that talked about the whole community approach, how the city actively collaborates with private businesses, stakeholders, neighbors, community partners, religious organizations, and my big question that I kept writing was, it does? It does? We do this? Because I didn't know that, and I've been on council for five years. So I think a lot of this is aspirational, but I'd like to see it implemented. I'd like to see something come from this plan.
It did happen in the past.
Well, it hasn't happened in the last five years.
And I think my concern with this is that there are new players everywhere, and, you know, as we dust these things off, that those new relationships, you know, have to be made and maintained.
So my point is, is that I'd like to see that come from this, that this is a starting point of actually making those things happen, and what might have been happening in the past, let's bring that back. I especially found this section about the community group, what was that called? COPE? Is that what it was?
Yes.
Which I think we call CERT at some point. Let's get that back going, because I remember seeing flyers about that years ago, but I haven't recently, and I don't know if we have any neighborhoods that are actively participating in that. I think there'd be people who'd be interested. So, again, great starting point. Let's make it real.
Any further comments up here?
I was thinking, we're in an earthquake area, and if we had a bad earthquake, there's going to be enough work for everybody. And we need to have some kind of organization, like the Phone Tree or whatever that we might have, but it needs to be more than just trying to help Brian, you know, because we don't, none of us know what he's supposed to do and what we're supposed to do, because we're on the council. And like Suprina said, you get asked, my phone will start ringing if we can, five minutes after an earthquake. I mean, there's people need to know what, you know, how do I get my gas turned off? How do I, you know, get water now that it's spurring out down in the street? None of this stuff is covered here. And you can say that to whoever you talk to, that you ran into opposition a little bit because there wasn't enough spilled out, as far as I was concerned, and that's why I brought it up.
Thank you.
So with that, Brian, I know that you only tasked Connerstock with, sorry.
The basic...
Yeah, Logan, sorry. Logan, sorry. Logan Shine with doing this work, but is there a plan to take this a step forward?
Yes. Okay, if I may...
So let's talk about that.
So if I may, these are great comments, and I'm actually glad to hear these comments, that you went in and you recognizing what that document does and what it doesn't do. Everyone here has lived through some type of traumatic event, and I just want to make it very clear to the council. I don't have a big S on my chest, I'm not going to be the Lone Ranger, you know, trying to direct everything. The point of this type of document is, when I recognize there's a time to reach for help, I definitely will call for external help. I will do that in a heartbeat. And then in return, when we do receive that response, either in whatever resource it may be, they want a point of contact. They don't want to try to find five council members. They'll contact the designated city manager and coordinator, and then they'll funnel it out, and then I can engage the council members, engage staff. So that's really what the point here is, is just designating the city manager as that lead person for collection and dispersal of information. So I just want to make that clear.
I think we understand that, but having lived through it.
Yep.
For example, the last city manager who was here during a crisis, we saw firsthand how busy.
Oh, I...
How busy that city manager was. And I think at times, we wanted to help more.
Yeah.
But our role wasn't codified, and we weren't able to help as much.
And that's what I said, these are good comments, and we'll go and address them. The intent here was to get this as the building block. That's all this document does.
Okay.
We didn't refine it to the next level. We will look at what options we can and maybe take out a few specific examples that we can flesh out and refine, but like Jerry has mentioned, you can't put into a plan every conceivable situation and response. Good emergency response plans are somewhat generic. They identify, okay, something happens, what is the response? Who responds, and what's the appropriate amount of response? And equally, I've managed emergency situations, and really, everything happens when it's all imploding. Everyone comes together and we can pull it off. It's actually the consequences after the action, when you have to document your course of actions during an emergency, as you're trying to get reimbursement from state or federal agencies, or you're trying to mitigate or abate that condition so it doesn't happen again. That is where really the true test of a plan and the planning mechanism that was applied is going to show its true intent. So I think what we're hearing tonight, myself and staff, we're going to go back, take a look at it. I hope you have confidence in to pass this document as is, as it is, so that we can go back, take a look at it, and look at additional material that we can put in there. We need to talk to a few experts, especially the county and then the state, because we don't want to replicate something. We want to take what they already refined, address it for our local needs, and then bring it back to the council.
I'm not hearing from the council objection thus far. I think what I'm hearing is we want more.
And that's, I guess that's what I'm saying. If you allow us to lock this down, and then we can go forward, and I think what, definitely what we need to do is reach out to the partners that you have identified during this discussion, and also that we have identified in the document, and just make sure that they're aware there's a document, there's an effort, and so that if a situation does occur, they're not caught off guard that, hey, why is the city calling us? Why, we don't want to be involved. Contact and communication, establish prior to event, pays dividends during event.
Absolutely. And with that, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Could I make a comment just before you do that?
Sure.
In response to Councilmember Connie's comment about the Brown Act. The Brown Act already does identify emergency situations and protocols of the eventual emergency. And it says that if you have sufficient time to give a one-hour notice to the newspaper or television stations, you should do so. If you don't have, if it's such an emergency, if you don't even have time to provide that one hour of notice, that's excused. There's no requirement for posting or advance notification about agendas. If you're in a dire emergency, the presiding officer can call a meeting. And if this, if this place is not an appropriate place to meet because of the nature of the emergency, the presiding officer can direct the meeting to take place somewhere else. And so it might be a good idea that the presiding officer is aware of these emergency procedures under the Brown Act, or the presiding officer can certainly consult with the manager or the city attorney on these things, but the Brown Act should not be a hindrance to this board's, this council's meeting in the case of emergency.
Thank you. That's good clarification.
Thank you.
All right. With that, is there anybody from the public that would like to address us? And if so, we're going to go ahead, and Logan's going to step aside, and then you can, don't go too far, though, in case we have a question for you. You'll have to step up to the podium, and it's appreciated if you'll announce your name.
John Hascheck. Just to go on what Attorney Lance said, is that when we had the COVID outbreak, you know, the county was meeting every evening, but it was informational meetings where the , you know, CEO or the city manager could give that information out to the members. There could be some clarifying comments, but it wasn't a discussion about what to do. So that information can be spread to everyone.
Thank you. Would you like to step up?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hello. Sidney Bowers, still live down the street. Two quick questions. With all due respect, it seems like there was quite a lack of accountability being taken in response to why we don't already have these details written down. That's number one. Number two, in order to publish a foundational document, what is there, a contingency plan that forces a schedule of further development of that? Like, is there something already written in stone? If this is just a foundation, if we're going to pass it blindly, what is the backup? What's the security?
There already is a plan.
Okay.
There has been one. This is an update. And...
But if it's not fleshed out, and it's not developed?
No, because, again, what happens is there's a plan, it sits, and that's what we're talking about, it sits on the shelf, and the reality is that it takes legal action that basically brings these forward so that it's something that needs to happen. It's something the council had directed the city manager to do at one point, and this is coming forward for that reason.
Sure. I think I was just more following up with Suprina's point of, there's nothing, like, scheduled. Like, where is that information?
There was a plan, and the bulk of the responsibility fell on staff. And I think what I'm saying and others are saying is that we want to see, the council wants to see more of the plan. We want to know the, we want to know the details.
Agreed.
We're the ones that get the call. And so we're essentially saying, bring the plan to us and make sure that we're informed, and let's disseminate that so that everybody else knows what the plan is too.
No, definitely.
We want it in writing.
Agreed. Yeah, no, I was just wondering if there's a, if there's a schedule for getting that.
Yeah. But I have to say that we have, we've been asking for this plan long before city manager Bender came along, and we're seeing something. So even though it's not fully what I want, I'm grateful that there's progress. I just am still holding true to the fact that we want more.
Sure. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
One of the things that I want to make it clear, as being a foundation plan, we made a conscious decision to use the template that was already provided through Cal OES. We could have made a very different plan and went, basically created the template by ourselves. Recognizing that wasn't the best use of funds and resources at this time, we wanted to use this plan, to use the template that was provided by Cal OES, because ultimately, when the council adopts this, it goes to Cal OES for their review and their checkbox, and they like consistency among all the jurisdictions, so they can do their checks and plans, checks of plans, and make sure they have the required elements. And then from there, we can become more specific for local conditions. And that's what we're hearing from the council, and that's what we're going to deliver.
Go ahead. Strongpoint.
Would you want to see if there's any other public comments first or last?
Did you have a question or a comment?
Well, I guess it's actually a follow-up and a couple of minor details, but the follow-up is, I think it's clear that we want more specific plans in place for some of these known risks that we're facing, earthquake, fire, you know, we know these are real. So... So what I was wondering is, is there, we know, want to do it, and we're saying, we're hearing from our city manager that we're going to do it, is there a timeline for how soon we will get, say, an annex to this plan that addresses what do we do in the event of this and of that? And what are the roles that's, you know, all the questions that we've been bringing up, up here, is there a timeline for accomplishing that?
No.
Not yet.
We haven't scoped it out at staff level.
Okay. Because I think we're, we are all feeling a certain amount of emergency, because it could happen anytime.
Mr. Shine?
Yes, I would just like to say that the current schedule for this right now is the annual review, which is, makes us accountable to our elected officials. So.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, but I think your council's telling you, we don't want to wait a year.
Exactly.
And we're willing to be involved in the process, if that's, if that's what is needed. I'm willing to wait, since it sounds like maybe we may be leaning towards giving that direction this evening, that you come back to us with a timeline next, by the month of October, with a, with a reasonable timeline, but it sounds like we're, we're saying that we want it sooner than later. We're, we're in fire season, and we have been waiting for a while.
And so are we looking for a, if we're going to hash out a functional annex or a hazard specific annex, is fire the first primary one that we want to go with? Or is there a specific hazard that we would like to scope first?
For me, it's fire.
Fire.
Yeah, me too.
Earthquake next. Well, actually, I know that we're in the middle of, I think, fire, because we're right in it, and that seems to be what sometimes derives folks from out of the areas to come here, but then, then we go straight into flood season, and while that may not be a, and obviously, I think the big, the three horsemen of the apocalypse around here are fire, flood, and earthquake.
And drought.
Yeah, yeah. That one we can kind of, you know, kind of walk into.
So sometime in the next two or three months, working with community development schedule, Dusty Dooley will be presenting the emergency flood response plan. So that's going to detail specifically flood-related emergency. So we have that as in that, potentially, we can include that as an addition to this document. So we'll have that already addressed, but these other items, we just haven't scoped it yet. We have to figure out what's the intent, what's the template that we need to use, what resources we have to go out and reach, and who's the experts that we need to talk to.
I think we would, I would like to see that, like we do a goal-setting session for the council, I'd like to see the council involved, and then I'd like to see partners that, that come to that meeting too. I'd like to see Brook Trails there as a partner. I want to see the senior center there as a partner. I want to see our transit agency there as a partner, and, and other types of agencies like that, other civic groups. I want it to be a collaborative document that each can walk away with and use as a, as a tool. Yes.
You know, I think that normally when you put these together, as it said in the document, that it's a collaborative with the community, but I know that a lot of folks already have emergency plans. Some of them probably, like most circumstances, are maybe sitting on a shelf, but I know the school district has an emergency plan, the hospital has one, a lot of these folks, and that may push them to kind of freshen up their plans as we update ours. And in the past, a lot of these, a lot of their plans were annexes in our past plans that, and I know a lot of, a lot of times, it's staff that's doing a lot of the work or directing out there, and that's usually how the system is, is set up. Public Works, Fire, Emergency Services, they're, they're doing that aspect of it. As far as whether a public information officer pushes out information, kind of like when that fire was happening here at Cal Forty Department of Forestry here, and Cal Fire had a PIO come up here and update a sheet out here that was kind of putting things out. And so those sort of things happen. But it'd be nice if locally, we had kind of a plan, and we knew which staff members are charged with that, and, or what roles, so that down the road, if that changes.
That is on page two.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Yeah. But I mean, it's one where people change, you know? I know in the past.
Yeah. But the thing I did appreciate about this particular document is on page two, it didn't name the individual, because councils should know who those individuals are, but it did do a good job of defining, you know, what their primary role was versus what their secondary role was. And so I'll probably keep that handy. Yeah. And then we, I wanted to finish public comment too. Thank you, public, for being patient. Go ahead.
Well, because of your reference to page two, I had two very nitpicky comments, but one of them is on page two. I wondered why the HR department is the primary for care and shelter. It doesn't make sense to me that.
That made sense to me.
It does make sense to me.
It does make sense. Think about it. In HR, what are you generally doing? Taking care of people? Out of all of the people, all of the different staff positions, that seemed the most logical. I mean, water's dealing with water issues, police are dealing with police, and HR needs a role, and what better role than to ensure that people's needs are being taken care of? That was my perspective.
Okay. It just seems like they're dealing with people who work for the city, and the city, the city workforce is also going to be dealing with the whole crisis. This person, whoever it may be, needs to know where we're going to put evacuees, where we're, how we're going to feed them, how we're going to shelter them. So it could be done by that person, but it didn't make a lot of sense. And the other nitpicky thing was, on page four, it says, it's item number five, city manager adoption. And I didn't understand, first of all, the paragraph that is in there doesn't say anything about city manager adoption. And.
What page?
Page four. The city manager doesn't usually adopt things, we adopt them, and the city manager implements them. It just seemed like a funny, it, the paragraph doesn't even, isn't even about that. It's just a minor nitpick.
Okay.
Well, the city manager adoption, what it says is, this shall be the official emergency operation plan for the city of Willets, which supersedes earlier plans. We should not interpret anything in this plan as limiting the use of good judgment and common sense in situations not anticipated or addressed by the elements of the plan or any of its annexes and appendixes. Is there a part of that that you objected to, or was it better?
When I see a title like that, I think it means that he adopts the plan. Well, we're the ones that adopt the plan, and he, it's not a big deal.
The title was funky.
No, we didn't clean it up.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
Was there anything else, Magic, before you go back?
I think that'll, yeah, that's enough.
I've come back at something, and so. All right. Is there, are there any members of the public that would like an opportunity to speak still on this item? All right. Sounds like it's back up here.
I would like the new adoption of the basic emergency operations plan.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I think, you know, we need a basic start of planning, whatever it is. It's like an outline or something. It's not really, and I think we need that legally, so.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to, just to put in those links on page 15?
Well, with the.
With the, okay. So that was a, that was a yes.
Which was an amendment.
Just not, just making sure that we insert the, where it says insert links is all.
Yes.
It was minor. Yes.
And is this with the understanding that within the next two to three months, as you stated, city manager, this will come back to us with more fleshed out details?
What I'm looking at, if I may, at least by the second October meeting of October 25th, that there will be a scope of work identifying additions to this document and how it can be refined. And then from there, if the approval's there, I'll have to do something possibly of budget amendment, depending on the scope, and how much work is necessary. I can't promise you what we can do now, because I don't have details.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's reasonable.
That's what we're asking for. That's what I.
I mean, I just wanted to move forward. I mean, I'm happy it's come forward at this point, because it's, it's one of those things that's been kicked forward for a while.
Too long, sorry. I apologize.
Well, it was before you too.
I think the point, the point that Councilmember Connie's making is, would you be willing to add that as part of your, as part of your motion?
Well, I guess I will add it as part of my motion, but I think it's with the understanding that it's supposed to happen.
Okay. And the second?
Sure.
Is that, was that you, Strong? You were the second on the motion? Okay. All right. I'll call for the vote. Are you clear on the?
Somebody can leave a clear motion, please.
I would say the motion is to adopt the basic emergency operations plan as presented with the links, and with the understanding that by the second meeting in October, we will have a update with a possible scope of work for.
Next steps.
The next steps.
All right.
Councilmember Connie? Yes. Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
No.
Edol.
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries four to one, and I just want to note that in this item, it does say part one, base one, base plan, so I think we're all looking forward to part two.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. All right. Moving on to the next notice of public hearing, which is a presentation and discussion of general planned use element update with a focus on proposed land use designations and land use maps.
Ooh. It went dark.
Went dark. Dusty?
Yeah.
Could you do me a favor? It's really been bothering me that that podium is facing essentially like the wall over there, and each person's trying to squeeze against that, that beam, and I just, I want them to feel more comfortable and look pointed towards us. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Dolores, for the best. Appreciate the help, as always. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Dusty Dooley, your community development director. This is part two of the land use element update. I am going to attempt to speak louder and try to move through the presentation a little bit faster, but obviously stop and answer questions or provide clarification as needed. So just a quick recap at the last council meeting, the, again, we were talking about the draft land use element, and the focus was on the policy language as well as the sphere of influence proposal. Appreciate council giving firm direction on some, some fine tuning, some modifications that we want to make, and we, we have started to address that. We have John and Collette, our fantastic consultants with Plan West, again, with us tonight. And we'll be bringing forward those changes at council's direction when we hope to bring this forward in, on October 23rd for potential adoption of the EIR, certification of the ER, and adoption of the land use element. Tonight, again, this is the discussion item, so we're looking for, for feedback, certainly from council, certainly from the public. And again, any changes that we want to make, we'll have that opportunity between now and October to complete. So for tonight's focus, we're looking at the proposed changes to land use designations. So the, the big highlight will be the proposed mixed use, land use designations. And then, again, per state law, we need to provide additional land use criteria, such as floor area ratios for our industrial and commercial uses, as well as density ranges for our residential uses. And then at the end of the land use element, you'll see a table that, that talks about allowable uses in different zonings, and so that's, that's per state code too. After that, we're going to move into proposed changes to the land use map. Again, what we're looking at is a comprehensive update to the entire city limits and the existing land use designations. This hasn't happened comprehensively since at least 1994, so certainly do. And we, we've broken those up into pretty three standard categories. Property owner land use request, so we did receive some requests from some landowners that staff is looking to recommend support of. We'll go over those tonight. Changes that represent opportunities to the city. Again, the, the big focus of this process is, is looking to create additional housing development opportunities. And then we have what we've defined as land use mapping cleanups. And so there are quite a few parts, well, probably the majority of the changes that are being requested by staff, where the longstanding land use doesn't match the zoning. So the common one is, we have a bunch of single-family residential homes that are located in commercial zonings. If you look at it just on the face, what the city is essentially saying, if we were to maintain that, that land use designation corresponding zoning is that, hey, if that house ever burns down or gets old, we don't want you to replace it, we want to see commercial uses. That doesn't appear to be the, the intent of, of the city, and so we have a lot of these cleanup changes that we're going to be going over tonight as well. And then I'll be, probably at the mayor's discretion, I'll be pausing at that point, and then we can open up public comment, answer questions. But then after that, John's going to take over the podium here, and he's going to go over some of the, an overview of the environmental impact report summary. And Mayor, councilmember Stransky had his hand up.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is the county aware of all of these things? Because we bought a place as a residence, but it was in a commercial zone, and the taxes just went way out of sight for us, and you couldn't get a loan for the money that everybody else was getting in. That's a fact. So we need to let the county know that we're doing these things, and that we have to adjust, or they have to adjust, to the right things that need to be done. Thank you for talking.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. And yes, the, the county is absolutely aware of this. They've been, one of the referral agencies and part of some of our coordination meetings from, from the start, including recently. Yeah. Okay. Yep. So this is the same slide that we saw at the last meeting. There's been many meetings leading up to this one. Efforts been made for community outreach. And then current schedule, so we're on council hearing number two, proposed land use changes. We, I do want to note that we extended the public comment period on the draft EIR from the ninth to this Friday at 5:00 PM to the 13th, and so notice has gone out noting the, the extension of the public comment period for the EIR. Again, we're, we're going to be taking any comments tonight on the EIR, but we'll ask that those, any comments also be followed up in writing to be part of the record. And John can speak a little bit more to that process when, when he, when he gets up here later. So we're going to start, just go and propose changes to the land use designations. This is the, the table, the summary table that's included in the land use element. It notes all the land use designations, including the newly proposed mixed use zonings, and then it defines the floor area ratio, like we discussed, by state law, we do need to provide those for non-residential uses. And then it has the density ranges for the various residential land use designations. There's a, the red asterisk noting some corrections, some point, in some, one point for add, we're providing a little bit of clarity, and for the other one, that was just a error on staff's report, so that's just noting that, that correction. And so these densities aren't necessarily new. They're borrowed from our zoning code. They weren't found in our general plan before. Now they are in our general plan, again, borrowed from our zoning code. But also, it's in recognition of state law that allows for accessory dwelling units, as well as the ability to apply SB 9 within our residential low density, which would be our corresponding R1 or single-family residential zoning. So that's how we arrived at, at those densities. So these are the residential land use designations. These are not new. These exist currently in the general plan. They're, they're, at, sometimes the, the language has been tweaked a little bit, but the intent behind these designations remains the same. These are the new proposed land use. These are the new proposed land use designations. We have two of them, the Main Street mixed use and the, and the general mixed use. And I'll note, so we're, we're creating the land use designations, and after the land use element's adopted, then what we need to quickly get on is, is creating the land, the zoning designations. So we're looking at a land use map tonight. We're going to need to follow up with the corresponding zoning map, following that consistent with, with the land use map. So you have your general plan designation, then you have your zoning designation. So for instance, you might have a commercial general, general plan designation, but under that, you're going to have a zoning of C1 or C2. So the C1, C2 is, that's your base zoning that's based on your land use designation, which is the overarching commercial, for instance. Industrial, you might have a land use designation of MG for industrial. Are you heavy industrial? Are you, you know, light industrial? So, so again, we, we need to follow up, just like with, it's like the, it's a, it's a policy document. It's going to tell us we should, you know, look at creating additional, you know, buffers from creeks. Well, it's, it might be the zoning code or the development code where we actually, you know, codify those things. That, that probably didn't provide clarification. I'm seeing some confusing looks, but.
A few puzzled look.
Yeah.
Well, as I'm looking through just this spreadsheet that we have here, and I'm listening to you, I'm a little confused. In general, I understand what each zoning designation means, but Main Street mixed use versus general mixed use? At first I thought, oh, it's because it's on Main Street, but then I noticed there, there are units on Main Street that are going to be general mixed use, and most of the others will be Main Street mixed use. What is, what is, what defines the difference between those two?
Yeah.
There must be something specific. And I'm trying to, trying to.
There is, there is, yeah. So very, very good question, and you, and you do have the proposed intended, intended language here, but maybe to try to speak to that further. With the Main Street mixed use, it is very much, and again, we're going to follow up with the zoning end of it as well, but, and so that's where you're going to see like, you know, lot standards and parking standards and height limits and these other types of controlling development standards, lot standards. But I would say with the Main Street mixed use, which is going to be applied to that core, is proposed to be applied to that core downtown commercial space that fronts Main Street, one of the primary purposes of that zoning is going to be to maintain and protect and enhance the commercial use on the bottom floor fronting the street, while still allowing for opportunities to establish residential on the back of, on top of, or otherwise on the property. But it, but it's, so that's, that's a distinction. Whereas the general mixed use, I would say, would very much, you know, allow for greater flexibility of residential uses while still allowing for the opportunity, the sort of vertical or horizontal integration of commercial uses. So it would, it would, you know, have a little bit more flexibility, or maybe a lot more flexibility on the residential side and how that could be located. It could, you know, very much allow for primary residential with, with minimal commercial towards office space, but with the Main Street mixed use, it's not going to create a situation where you could purchase the property, tear down the commercial use, put the, the housing on the front facing the street, and then have like a minor commercial use in the back. So I don't know if that kind of gives an example of the distinction, one distinction between those, those two proposed mixed use districts.
Okay.
I didn't get ready yet.
Dusty, maybe, if I may, maybe a way to help explain it, what's the dominant appearing use? Is it overly residential or commercial? Would you say that would help?
With, with Main Street mixed use, you're protecting that, that, that base commercial use that fronts Main Street. That has to be the anchor. That has to remain to allow anything else related to residential. You have greater flexibility on that in the general mixed use area.
I'll just give you an example, and maybe that'll help me understand it better. If I'm looking at page one of your, of these, of these different parcels, and if I go down towards the bottom to the parcel, let's see, the 005, 150 dash 05, it appears that the one before is the neighbor, and then the one after is their neighbor, if I'm following this correctly. And I'm just wondering, as I'm looking through this document, why would one neighbor have Main Street? If they're right next door to each other, wouldn't it be consistent that we would use the same type of, of use? And if we, if we're not using the same type of use, is it based on conversation with that specific property owner that, that we're, we're trying to compromise and not change it because they've objected, or is it that we've identified something special?
Yeah, I, I think it might be helpful to start going through the distinction in, in the visual format, and then this, and I, and I want to give John an opportunity to maybe help, help provide some clarity, too. And then I'll, I'll try to explain this because this was supposed to kind of be a cheat sheet and be helpful to follow along with the PowerPoint presentation.
But these aren't necessarily next door neighbors, are they?
Maybe not. I need to get some clarity on that, but.
I can be patient and wait, wait in the process. Go ahead and keep going.
I just, I wanted to add one quick thing, that, that, the, one of the unique characteristics of the downtown mixed use, the, the Main Street mixed use, is that there's a policy suite in the land use element associated with it, and it's goal for, and it's to activate Main Street as the vibrant commercial and cultural core of the city, and there's a series of policies that talk about the character of the downtown area and some of the policy priorities to, to activate reuse, to potentially provide for parking flexibility, to maintain the shop front look. So there's a series of policies that general mixed use can be applied anywhere within the city, and that, that downtown mixed use is applied primarily to the downtown specific plan area, areas fronting on Main Street, and, you know, as shown on the map, it's south of, south of San Hedren High School, and there's a creek. The areas that sort of has a cohesive look and feel to it, or areas that the city would want to be developed in that manner.
That makes logical sense. I was just confused because I thought, for example, these parcels, because their parcel numbers were one right after the num, another, that they must be neighbors, and so I didn't understand why occasionally there was one with just general mixed use.
Thank you for that explanation, John. Much appreciated. So, so what I'd like to do now is just, you have a copy of the large proposed land use map that comes out of the draft land use element itself, and then what I'm going to do is, is start going over different areas of the city, highlighting some of the proposed land use changes, and then we have it broken up into, again, those three categories, the opportunity sites, the, the property owner request, and then what we've, we've called the, the cleanup sites. And so the way that this is organized with, with the hope of being helpful to follow along with the presentation tonight, is we are now on opportunity slide number one. So on the left-hand side of the column, you'll have all those parcels that are included on this slide, and then you have the, the change numbers. So you see the 32 is, is that large group of, of properties in the core downtown, number 11 identifying the properties to go from commercial general to the general mixed use, and so on. Sometimes the change numbers identify one property, but most often, they're identifying a, a large group of properties. And if that's not helpful, just ignore it, please. All right. So starting at the top here, you're looking at the northern end of the city, just south of the high school. You can see the purple area is identifying the proposed downtown mixed use area, and then the reddish color is proposing the, the general mixed use area. So, so again, really looking to apply the downtown mixed use to that core downtown area where we do have those established commercial buildings that are, are fronting the, the property line. Often, these are locations where the, the building has essentially been allowed to build out for, to the, the entire property lines. They're relying on off-street, off-property parking, on-street parking, and again, this is commercial, these, these properties are all currently zoned commercial, and we're looking to apply the mixed use zoning district to create a greater flexibility to allow for additional housing opportunities and the other benefits that come through mixed use. So with that, I'll move on to the next slide here.
That variable gap, there's the railroad tracks.
Correct. And then this is San Hedren High School there. So within the, within the general mixed use area, you have the Mexican Restaurant that Roberto Vasquez owns the property, and then on the east side there is the old Sun Cycle Building. And then as you maneuver across the railroad tracks, then you get into the proposed downtown Main Street mixed use area, and then that is the brewery on the east side is the first property up against State Street and Main, just to, that helps us get oriented a little So now we are continuing south on Main Street. Again, you have the properties that front Main Street, again, commercial zoning being proposed to go to the downtown mixed use zone, and then you have some additional properties off to the east that are being, that do not front Main Street, that are being recommended to go to general mixed use. These are properties that either have a residential use or are used for sort of minor commercial purposes like, like office space. So continuing to go further down South Main Street here, sort of continuing on with the theme of maintaining the, the change in, in land use designation to downtown mixed use. And then we get to a location just south of Alameda Street. So as we pass Mariposa Market there, we start getting into an area of the city that is primarily being used for residential purposes with some minor office spaces, and there's, because of sort of that distinction, recognizing that it's mostly a residential use, but, but still maintains a commercial zoning and, and fronts on to our Main Street there, we applied the, recommending applying the general mixed use zoning, or excuse me, land use designation, not zoning. Just seeing if you were paying attention. Thank you. And I'm trying to scroll on. So any, I guess I'll stop there, Mayor. You're look, I know that that was a lot already. I understand.
I'm following.
Okay.
Just making, making sure. I noticed your color changed to pink, and now it's 43, so I'm just trying to connect the dots.
Thank you for using the chart. We. So now I'm on to opportu, opportunity slide number four, and.
Can I just ask what feature on so that I can find it? I'm on the agenda. I'm trying. Is there a?
Slide number.
So the, the agenda has a different, a little bit different than this, so it might not go. But John's going to look at the.
I don't understand.
Well, I can tell you where we are is, now that we're on opportunity slide number four, we are on the northern end of the screen. We're essentially looking at the Safeway area. We've crossed, on the, now we're on the south side of Highway 20. You've got Franklin Avenue, the old Remco site here. You've got the Bechtel School in Blosser here. So what you're. So what we're, we're showing on this slide is we have the schools that we're looking to rezone to public facility. They're actually currently zoned industrial. I'm going to turn this my way. Sorry, Madge. Thank you. We have the, I'm sorry, this is not, I did not mean to be at the school district. That's actually a cleanup, and it's not shown on this slide, although it's in the picture. So we have the old, old hospital site that was donated to the health facility, and they're planning to establish medical offices there. So we're looking to rezone it from public service, change the land use designation to commercial general to some, support that anticipated development. You also have some larger properties that are in either residential low density or zoned industrial. This is the Group 51, which is on the south side of Franklin, in between the storage units and the old Remco site. That property is underutilized, is fairly large, and represents a significant housing opportunity. So we're looking to change the, the land use designation from low density to medium density. It still would allow under that for, if we moved to the corresponding R2 district, it would, still would allow for a single-family neighborhood, or it would allow for a higher density development such as apartments or duplexes. Moving further south onto the, the west side of Locust there, we have, so again, some larger properties that are underutilized and are in, in close proximity to the, to the schools and other services that staff feels would be appropriate to rezone to potentially allow for a higher density of housing development. So that's, and that's 55, 58, and Group 61.
Dusty, can I have a quick question? If you're in one zoning situation and we change it as a city, but if you're not, I guess, are we changing it to match what is actually happening? Or if it changes and the individual, I'll just use this as an example, I've, I've got a shed and a garage that I'm operating a business out, but we change it to R1 hypothetically because we're rezoning that area. Is there a process where the owner goes, wait a second, I'm pre-existing doing this other stuff, and maybe when I die, my kids can make it R1?
Yeah.
Or vice versa?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that question. So the answer is, if we rezone it and that use no longer is allowed in the zoning, you would maintain the legal non-conforming status, and you would be subject to that protocol. I don't believe that we are creating that situation through this process. I believe, if anything, we are matching the zoning with the existing land use and not going the opposite way with it.
So like if we make something R1 that was something else, and then later on, an individual wants to develop that to be multi-use or something, that, that's allowable with the zoning?
Yeah, to kind of use your example, let's say there's a, a, a property that has apartments on it, and we rezone it to R1 and say, no, we only want single-family homes on it. Those apartments would become legal non-conforming, and they would be allowed to maintain them, but.
Would the reverse be true if?
Yes.
Because we want housing, so down the road.
Yeah, so in this situation, if you have a single-family home on it, and we, let's say, rezoned it to R3, they would be able to maintain the status of, of that single-family home.
I just, I know.
And in this case, the R2, if that's what we go with, with the zoning, allows both the single-family homes as well as allowing, so in this situation, all we're doing is, is allowing what's currently allowed under the current zoning, but, but creating additional options and flexibility. flexibility for them.
And the reason I ask is obviously, the last meeting where we had some folks didn't want to be married to us, in this case, people wake up in here at the city council meeting last night that we're changing their zoning, and all of a sudden, they're gonna be not compliant. There doesn't happen to be for them to continue.
Yeah, and letters did go out to each of the property owners that were potentially affected by this, and hopefully, we've been able to have conversations or get feedback on anyone that needed clarity. We did have some people that objected, and we were able to work with them to either modify this or in some cases, actually remove their property from it for whatever good reason they had. So, again, the intent of this is not to force a zoning on somebody that they don't want, but either to match through a cleanup and match the zoning, I keep saying zoning, land use designation with the longstanding land use, or like in the case with the mixed-use, or with the residential medium-density, provide them with all the same options they're allowed to do under their current land use designation, but just expand on that. So create more options and flexibility. Okay, so then, getting to Opportunity Slide Number Five. Now, we are on the southeast corner of the city. This is south of the Hale Creek subdivision on the east side of Highway 20, South Main Street. This property also is currently zoned for residential purposes, and we're looking at proposing a land use change to residential medium-density to, again, create additional housing development opportunities. What you'll notice there is we've also applied what we call the urban reserve combining district to that, and I think I maybe, it was in the slideshow, and it's in the land use element there. But what that, how we're using that combining district as a tool is to essentially identify this property as we feel is appropriate to support additional residential density development. However, it's not appropriate until proper infrastructure is in place. And in this situation, what we would specifically be looking for before doing, before actually allowing the corresponding zoning to take effect, which would allow for that higher-density residential development, is see another secondary connection over to Highway 20 so that you're, because otherwise, your only entrance into this property is through the Hale Creek subdivision. So we just started talking about, you know, emergency situations and the importance of evacuations and the danger of fire, et cetera. That's exactly why we would want to see a secondary access out of this before allowing the corresponding zoning to go through.
I have a question. I know that there's a Willits Shelter Action Group looking at trying to find a location for a shelter, and I'm wondering which of these zoning designations, one of the people involved was saying, there's like one, not even a whole block, there's one little tiny place where it's allowed, and where there's maybe a building that's suitable or something. But could you give me like a thumbnail, where along the whole Main Street corridor would the designations allow for that?
I'm trying to think which slide shows that area. Well, I can, if I don't find it, I can describe it.
Yeah, or you can come back to it.
Yeah, I think I'll get to a slide, but just to, and I'll point it out again when we, if we get to one, but Councilmember Strong, so, and Connor Stack, our city planner, he's attended that meeting, and he's taking the lead on being the liaison for our department and helping them facilitate and find a location for that warming shelter, or if it turns into something else. What our zoning code allows is, for an emergency shelter, including a warming shelter, is allowed by right in our C2 zoning district. So there are quite a few properties that encompass the C2 zoning. It's primarily, you'll find our C2 zoning along Main Street from the southern intersection with Highway 20 down to the Evergreen Shopping Center. And so maybe what, and this is what, you know, they're articulating to the community development department is...
Is that red?
Yes, the red. Yeah, correct. And is that they're, you know, probably struggling to find available spaces within that. So there's, I don't know how many properties include the C2 zoning district, 100, 200, I'm not sure. But, you know, again, trying to find available spaces, tenants that are willing to sell or lease out their property. That's not just a struggle for warming shelters, that's a struggle for a lot of different businesses in the city. Because again, a lot of the available spaces aren't turnkey-ready, so. Okay. So that wraps up the opportunity changes, and now, just gonna go over some property land use requests. This is the property immediately to the east of us. This request comes from Matt Goines. I think council is aware of this. They purchased the property next door, and they're looking to do a mixed-use development. That's your key, Dolores. I don't know what I did.
I actually have her mouth tested.
Okay, never mind. Thank you. Just wanted you to get up, Dolores. Stretch your legs. So again, we don't have any proposals into the city. They're very much anxious or awaiting this land use designation and then corresponding zoning change. But what they're looking to do is create a number of commercial units along Commercial Street, and then residential units both above and behind. So that would be great, because by creating this new tool to actually see it used and recognize development on a vacant lot is, would certainly make me feel good.
To be general mixed-use.
Correct. Off of Main Street, the zoning we can, mixed-use, we can apply wherever.
Could I ask that when you bring this back for adoption, to use, separate that Section 18 from the general plan use? Just break it out in terms of adoption on the agenda, because, Attorney still here? I have a conflict of interest and would not like to be excluded from the project as a whole. But I have a conflict of interest in one section, and as I look through other areas of town, could potentially have other, as I would imagine, there may be other council members, so, City Attorney. What's your thoughts?
So, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking. She's got corporate...
Initially, I was asking to pull out, when we go to do the adoption, to pull out just 18 and adopt it separately. But then, as I was stating that, I realized that there are more than one, so maybe I just need to exclude myself overall, because I did see that there, that would be a conflict of interest, as well as I have property that's located within two of the areas.
The recommended action tonight is to review this and receive public comment, right?
Correct.
To not take any action on it.
Yes.
So, thanks for the heads up. I think when we get to the point of taking action on it...
I was just forward-thinking.
Exactly, and there is, there is the ability of the Political Reform Act to do segmentation.
That's what I was thinking.
To designate a segment of a project, and we can address that.
Okay.
Just to give you another heads up, I also own commercial property on Main Street that's listed in this, so then, does that mean I will not be able to vote on this when this comes forward? And the same with Mr. Stransky? So now, you have three out of five down.
The fact is, a general, a general plan affects the entire city. So I wonder if there is some leeway in these conflict of interest rulings. If you're looking at the whole city and you're trying to, you know, figure out where housing might go and where commercial needs to be augmented, as opposed to a particular development that happens to be next door to your property, you're looking at the whole city, how does that conflict of interest provision apply to things like that? Because it's gonna get to be very weird, because virtually all of us up here have property somewhere in the city.
You know what, it's really difficult in a city that's as small geographically as the city of Willits to deal with conflicts of interest provisions. We don't have to deal with that this evening, and there is a provision under the Political Reform Act for participation notwithstanding in conflict if it's required. If, if in order to have a quorum, it's necessary for a member who has a conflict to participate, we can deal with that, and a member can participate. If there are two members who are conflicted, and we're struggling to obtain a quorum, then you get into a situation of drawing straws to see which conflicted member can participate to establish a quorum. We don't have to deal with that this evening, but thanks for the heads up, and it looks like we'll have some challenges ahead of us.
Yes. Yeah, and I think...
You asked for questions.
I already had that one in mind, and I'm glad it flushed out a little bit already here, so, yeah. And yes, understood, if we need to, we can separate it out so that actions can be taken as necessary. That's not an issue. So continuing on to these property owner land use requests that we're recommending to move forward with. Mr. Shaw purchased the property on the north side of Franklin, bordered by the Highway 20 Park to the north, and then you have the Arco Gas Station here to the east. This property's vacant, currently zoned for low-density. He's helping to do some type of apartment duplex, fourplex type of development, and so we're looking to support that and find that it is appropriate to move forward with a residential medium-density change to the land use designation to support some housing development. Then, Mr. Willoughby has property, this is the hospital, the soon-to-open CCC campus on the other side of the bypass on the north side of East Hill Road up against the property line. There's some property that he owns. Again, he's looking to do a single-family home subdivision on this land, is requesting the zone, excuse me, land use designation change from open space to residential low-density. At first, I was kind of a little suspicious, understanding open space, there's probably some type of resource or reason behind that designation. I got the history from the previous community development director and was led to understand that that zoning designation, which also previously encompassed the property to the south that now has the industrial park on it, they were using the open-space designation as a holding for the Caltrans bypass that came in later. I don't quite, don't quite know, I can't fully flush out how that was helpful or why that was. But subsequent to that, other properties that had that open-space designation for that reason were successfully changed. Based on some studies that Mr. Willoughby's done, there aren't any significant resources that would lead staff to want to designate that as open space because of some sort of protection for some sort of sensitive environmental habitat. So understanding that logic, understanding that the land is appropriate to support a single-family residential subdivision, that we would go ahead and allow for this change request to occur.
On your cheat sheet, it shows it going from open space to ag-general, but that is a mistake? What it's actually doing is going from open space to residential low?
So, so, good catch. Two points for you. So the, this is not the entire property. There, let me see if it's on the next slide. The property actually that Mr. Willoughby owns extends to the north, and prior to the owner's request, this area's staff was recommending to go to the ag zoning. So his property would then, a portion would be the residential low-density, the other portion would go to the agricultural zoning.
Thank you, Crata.
Mr. Lucier Digger, he has the property here between School Catherine Lane on the south side of West Van Lane, and he would like to do a residential project there and has requested the R3 zoning. And staff is recommending support of that request, again, to create that opportunity and realize some additional housing in the city. This is, now we are on the, back to the north end of town, on the west side of Main Street. You have San Hedren High School to the north. This is the Padula Lumber Company, and they, there are some residential uses there, and they are asking that it go from commercial general to the Main Street mixed-use. I will note that staff had already recommended that the surrounding lands go to Main Street mixed-use. I spoke to the property owner that has this little parcel here, which sort of then became an outlier of a residential zoning. They said they had no opposition to the request to continue on with the, they didn't object to the property owner's request to go to mixed-use, and they said, we would like to go to mixed-use too. So with council's consent, when we come back forward with the final draft, we would be including this parcel in the mixed-use zoning as well. I will note that down here is the infamous vacant lot on the corner of Main and Commercial Street, and all of this is under common ownership. And so that might be a reason to allow for a continuous zoning within that area.
At some point, I'd like you to kind of elaborate on what kinds of things could be allowed in this, in this whole area. That's kind of a critical area, and, and sort of like, what is the, I know it's mixed-use, but, you know, how far can you go?
So the, so we're gonna be following up with the zoning code implementation of it, and that's when you're gonna, you know, get into the prescribed, allowed uses, the discretionary uses, parking standards, height limitations, all those setbacks, all those types of law standards. But the vision right now with the mixed-use is to allow all those same commercial uses that are currently allowed in the C1 zoning district. And I think, and again, we have direction under one of the policies in the current land use element to look at adding more appropriate uses into the permitted use to support commercial businesses. So maintaining all of those, plus maybe adding some more permitted by right, commercial uses, but then also allowing for residential uses as well.
Does it end up being sort of like a planned unit development thing where they have to come in with, where are they gonna put the housing, where are they gonna put the commercial, as opposed to, like, for example, could they do the entire thing in housing?
Not in the, not in the downtown Main Street mixed-use, no. At least, not, not by right.
The, the, first floor, commercial, is really intended to be Main Street-related, and the zoning regulations could allow exclusively residential away from Main Street. A parcel could, could potentially be all residential if it's away from Main Street.
Is Trinity River Lumber Company in this swath of purple?
No.
Yeah, okay.
But I can point that property out on the later slide. And I know we did get a letter from them earlier today, so.
What is the red square different than the mixed-use, I mean, the little corner there? That's, is that fronting on West Commercial?
That was, yeah, that was, yes, correct.
And what...
So this is, this is the vacant lot on the corner of Commercial, and then these are some quasi-commercial businesses further down Commercial Street on the north side.
So that is just a straight commercial zone?
That would be the, that was in an earlier slide, so, because we're showing the property owner's request, but that would be general mixed-use.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Hard to distinguish the colors on here.
Okay, we'll make note of that, too. Okay, thank you. That was a remaining commercial. I'm sorry, I misspoke, so I also got confused by the colors. This is zoned commercial currently and will stay commercial, so no, no change there.
Okay.
Thank you, John. So then we get to what makes up the majority of the proposed land use designation changes within the city, and these are the cleanup ones, where, again, we're looking to match the longstanding land use with the zoning, so in many cases, taking what's a non-conforming land use and turning into a conforming land use. As we've said before, and I think it's important to state again, what we've heard from property owners, prospective buyers, real estate agents, the banking industry, when you have, for instance, a single-family home that's in a commercial zoning, the commercial zoning says, we don't allow for single-family homes, it can run into issues with getting conventional loans to purchase a property, it can run into issues when you're trying to refinance and borrow against your home. So hopefully, by providing this change, it will create... So hopefully, by, by providing this change, it will create some better opportunities for transfers of properties or taking advantage of any equity that you may have in your home. As an example, it's not strictly situations where it's commercial going to residential, but I'll go ahead and start going through those. So starting at the, the north end of town, and I'll go back to this slide to maybe touch base on the proposed log yard project, which is not wrapped up in this land use element. It's going forward on its own separate application, but the, we're on the, the north end of town here, you have the, the high school property, and what you're showing on this cleanup slide is some of the school properties going to public service land use to obviously match their intended use. You also have the property that's just behind the firehouse that would go to public service. And then these are, the yellow are outlining existing residential uses that are not zoned residential, so looking to apply the residential zoning to, again, match up the longstanding land use. This is a situation where the zoning line didn't match up with the property line, and so we're aligning land use with the parcel boundaries. So again, moving further south through town, the parking lot on the, next to the Justice Center, looking to match that up with the public service designation. You have quite a few properties in this slide where we're lining, cleaning up the, the land use designation and applying the residential zoning. We're applying the public service zoning to your, land use designation to the Highway 20 Park. This neighborhood here, this was kind of one of the, the common examples that staff brought up that, that needed to be cleaned up. This is an area that's zoned commercial, but is almost completely predominantly built out as a single-family home. Well, actually, you have quite a bit of multifamily homes within here, too, as well as single-family homes, but very much a residential neighborhood. And that's why we're looking to apply the, the residential medium density to this area to recognize the, the mixture of housing. Also, on the other side of the street, you do have the, the R2 zoning as well, so it would be consistent in that sense also.
Quick question. So I remember when we first talked about this, was it last year, we discussed how that, that neighborhood in particular historically had some little shops scattered around, a saddle maker, shoe repair. So, once we convert this to the medium density residential, does that mean that nobody will be able to go in for a little corner shop in there?
Probably. We, the, the properties that still maintain a commercial use, those are those little blocks of islands within there, so they're getting to maintain the commercial zoning. So that's like the, I think that's Roundtree Glass, that's Jeff's Appliances. But yeah, once you get the residential zoning, it would, you know, prohibit something like a grocery store, a corner store going in. I do want to note that we have policy that is going to have staff look at allowing for a greater use of cottage industries and home occupation industries within residential areas, so that would allow some commercial uses, but typically wouldn't go to the extent of a, a corner store necessarily. But there are some blocks of commercial that you could see in there that would still, although that's not what their current use is 20 years from now, or if someone else purchased that and wanted to convert that into a corner store, you do have those pockets still within those neighborhoods to accommodate them.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. All right, now we've crossed over Highway 20. We're still have South Main Street here in the center, and you're continuing to see some cleanups, the Blosser Elementary School going to public service, the residential zoning being applied to different residential properties there. And then this is the Bechtel Road horseshoe here, and you do have some properties that do not front Main Street and are currently being used for residential purposes, including multifamily housing. So in these situations, we're looking to provide for the residential medium density zoning. This residential area behind here also carries that, that residential medium zoning density. This property here is the, is the repair shop behind the trailer business, so that is very much a commercial use, and so we're looking to change that designation to commercial to match up with that use. And then again, the CCC campus, we will be looking to support the public service land use designation. And then, as Councilmember Connie correctly noted, this is the northern section of Mr. Willoughby's property, and we're looking to apply the agricultural designation there. Let's see, we heard some comments last time about the favoritism towards designating some open space within the city limits. Of course, you know, we're, we really need to look at our own properties that we have ownership. And in this situation, 79 and 81, this is the property that's owned by the city that includes the Hale Creek Trail, and so, yes, we are looking to apply the open space designation to those properties. 82, the little Hale Creek Park, that also would receive the public service designation as we've been applying to our parks and schools and the CCC campus, so completing that cleanup. And then 83, what this is essentially doing, this was a situation where the zoning was not consistent with the land use designation, so to make that consistent, we're matching that up and applying the, the residential, the RS land use designation. And then finally, we have our satellite properties outside that are not contiguous to the city limits, including the airport, as well as our water treatment plant, and we're looking to apply the public service designations to those two outlier properties.
I have a question, Mayor. Yeah, so, this is on, it's on, my question is, do you have a rough estimate of how many new housing units could be accommodated with infill, given the zoning that you are recommending, or the land use designations you're recommending? So there's quite a few that are either undeveloped now or very underdeveloped, you know. Is there kind of a rough estimate there, how many units we're talking about?
We did do sort of back, back of the envelope, maximum build-out calculations, but they're, they're super unrealistic, they're not foreseeable, they far exceed the population that the current general plan and the proposed general plan update planned for, which is doubling the population, far exceeds that.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm glad that there is that leeway, because my fear was that we didn't have enough space for housing growth, that's available land. So at least theoretically, if developers can afford to do it, we have enough land to accommodate the housing needs and population growth.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, I also want to note that that concludes the presentation part of providing an overview of the proposed land use changes.
Thank you. Is council ready for public comment? Okay, I'm going to open it to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to address us on this agenda item? Go ahead and step to the podium, and if you wouldn't mind announcing your name for the record.
My name is Robin Leeler. I live right behind the police station, former courthouse. I wasn't sure I wanted to talk, and I'll just throw this out here briefly. Because I own the home, which is a large lot behind this area, I, I did get a notice from Dusty Dooley that my commercially zoned property, which is residential, is going to be made residential. And like Larry Stransky, most of my neighbors want it to be residential because they can get housing loans, mortgages, and insurance so much easier. I, on the other hand, my home had been used in the past, sometimes for office space, for a rider, where you get one person at a time, you don't need extra parking, it's not a big business. It's been used as a daycare center, it's been used as a rooming house, it has all these different commercial uses, and I really wanted to preserve that opportunity in the future to open up something. I, I know when I moved here, people had their beauty parlors in a garage, you know, and, and other little businesses like that. And I, I'm really impressed with how Dusty has worked with everybody individually to preserve all these, they're not conflicting interests, but being, being able to individualize what people need in this town to preserve its flavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Dusty, when a property owner prefers not to have their designation changed, is, is there any policy that we wanted in writing, or is coming to a public forum, like, was done and given notice? Is that sufficient?
Can you ask the question again? I'm sorry.
So, so the notice that, that many of us got, like, I got one similar to Robin's, and she doesn't want her zoning changed. Is there, is there a strong suggestion or a requirement that they put it in writing, or is coming and speaking sufficient enough to make an objection?
Can I get some clarity from, do you not want your property rezoned?
I think we had rezoned it in a way that preserved my right to have businesses in the future.
Right. We talked about sort of the home occupation and cottage industry and-
Yeah, and it was more informal, having to do with-
So, I, I think, Robin and I had spoken before, and I think where we left it off was she was okay with, with the rezone to residential, recognizing the opportunities that were provided through the home occupation and cottage industries. So like, for instance, you can have a daycare of a limited size, you can have a home office, and then, and again, like I said, we're looking to expand opportunities to allow for additional business beyond what's currently allowed in our zoning code.
So for clarification, with this particular instance, there isn't an objection? Is that correct?
I'm not objecting to anything.
Okay, all right. But, but the broader question was, is there any requirement that somebody submit to the city in writing, should they have an objection?
Yes, I would, again, someone can come and talk to the department, myself, at any point, if they have concerns about any prospective changes. At this point, we're pretty locked in as far as taking any additional requests from property owners for changes, because we, the EIR is out. But yeah, certainly, if somebody changed their mind or something like that, please have that conversation with me now. I probably will ask, you know, can you, can you shoot it over in an email, too, just so I have it in the record? But, but yeah, we're still, that's what tonight's about. And again, we're looking to move forward with adoption in October. Sooner the better, but absolutely, there's still opportunity to contact us and, and have those conversations.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Bender. Tamara Allenese, 145 Tuttle, and I'm the General Manager, Brook Trails. I really appreciate the nuanced elements of the infill, and in my back of the envelope, I was thinking 450 new units and, you know, two to three per, so, you know, talking about a couple, few thousand more people, which I think would be great for our city as we plan and move forward for growth. But it does bring back the issue regarding the wastewater capacity, so I do urge Plan West to take another approach and use the existing recorded wastewater data to determine capacity and the ability to grow, rather than the Lafco Municipal Service Review number from 2019. And I did submit a written, written comment on the draft DIR on behalf of Brook Trails to the city by the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Allenese, and my concern is the timing of all of these decisions. Actually, we saw a timeline earlier that this was going to be, you know, the final thing would be approved on October the 23rd. I understand this is like 10 years behind, so we have time to do that. We have an election coming up, if some of you don't know, and there are three current sitting council members who may or may not even be here in November, and it just seems weird that we're doing this in a hurry to get it done before the election. I feel like it might be better serve the population if we just delayed it until the people had a voice and their elected officials about where they want to go with this general plan. Land use doesn't seem to be very controversial, but I know last month, there was a number of people who had concerns about the sphere of influence, and I thought that, given the nuanced way we're going to continue to deal with the land use, and as well as the potential conflict of interest with the people who are voting on it, that we should just wait until after the election, because then people themselves would be able to decide which candidates would be able to better see of their needs. It doesn't, I don't see any reason so far, and maybe there is, I'd like to be corrected on that, why we would have to do it before the election, why can we not wait one month and still make the same decisions and still have the same voice? But then people will have an opportunity to look deeper into the SOI, as well as the land use, as well as the other conflict of interest that may or may not arise. So my, my suggestion is that we just delay the decision, the final decision, past the October date, just literally one month into November, and that we make those decisions possibly with a new board. Now, there might not be a new board, there might be just one person is a new person, there might be two, but there may be three, and that is a majority. So it just seems a little unusual that, you know, we can actually have a vote on the general plan that's going to affect our city for the next five or 10 years, but three members potentially may not even be here within the next two weeks. So it just seems like, why not just wait it? And considering the conflict of interest, I just, just feel like we'd better serve the population if we just delayed until we had a vote and then the proper people could be sitting down and discussing this, and maybe the people have a better voice on that. Thank you very much.
Did you want to respond?
Well, I'm just going to comment that the new, whoever the newly elected city council members don't actually take office until December. We only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. And also, the members that are currently sitting have been through multiple presentations, and we have a history with this. So I, I think, not that the newly elected people wouldn't be able to get up to speed quickly, but I don't see anything inappropriate about the existing council members going ahead with, with a process that began two years ago. You're in, I'm guessing.
Does a gentleman still have time?
He's got about 30 seconds.
So you still have time to speak first?
Appreciate that. Yeah, I, I can understand that. I don't mean to imply that any of you are going to vote to harm this city in any sort of way. I know that you've been doing it for years, it's a public process, people have, should have been known, they should have known for a long time. We all know they should have been involved a long time ago. But I think, again, last month's decision, I mean, last month's controversial, you know, people coming up saying they weren't notified, they didn't know, that speaks to the case that the people themselves are just now kind of making this their issue. Now, I know that you guys have been working on it for two years, but the people just now are just now realizing, "Oh, wait, my zoning is changing. Oh, wait." Now, it's unfortunate, because I'd like to say, "Well, you should have known two years ago." But since we're doing it now, I, I don't see any kind of financial reason, I don't see any legal reason. You know, I understand that seating any new members would not take place till later, so why not wait till January? We have many other works to work on. I, I don't see the advantage of like, "It has to be done now," but it's already been 10 years, and we can't wait two months? It seems, I, maybe the word inappropriate is not appropriate, but it just seems to better serve the population, in my public, in my opinion, if we just make that part of what we're debating and what people have a choice on this November. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Go ahead, sir.
I'm going to try to find new property, maybe. I think it was on that last one. That's got Clay Almetto's on it. This is the lot right here, right? Yeah, that's my current one. I don't know.
That might be the best I can do. I'll, I'll look to you.
That's fine, that's fine. Doug, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Victor Hollister, and I'm with North Fork Lumber Company, and I'm currently a, an employee of the log transfer yard just north of the high school. And I'm currently an employee of the log transfer yard just north of the high school. I'm sure many of you are aware of that facility. And Mr. Dooley briefly mentioned about the log yard project, which is the 20 acres north on the northernmost portion of the city limits. We're trying to rezone from commercial to industrial. And I know he mentioned it doesn't, it kind of is a side project. It's not totally part of the whole land use element update. But I understand that in the land use element update, it's currently zoned for commercial. And it looks like on the maps, it's still proposed for a commercial. And so I was just wondering, if possible, I'd like to, you know, have some clarity on how our land zoning proposal is separate from this land use element update and why it's not fully included? Or if it's just like, you know, a completely separate project that is, could come potentially slightly after this land use update is approved?
I'm going to let Dusty answer that question.
You stay there and I'll listen right here. So council is aware we came forward with an informational item, and there is currently a request for a general plan amendment and rezone, to rezone those properties that are north of the existing log yard, which again borders the high school there. So that includes the old Quail Meadows property and then the property further to the north that was previously owned by Mr. Schwink, I believe. So these are the northernmost properties within the city limits. And that is going through the standard general plan amendment rezone process right now. Staff is following the direction that we heard from council at the informational meeting. And we are working with the applicant to get the information that we need to move forward with the SEQA determination. And I would, and John, I'll let you maybe add to this too, as to why we specifically, the hardship in trying to include it within our EIR process. But the two key issues that staff is aware of that are related to that rezone, and I'm kind of stepping outside of really this land use element project, but you know, is, we understand that the log yard is a water-intensive project as it should be. And, you know, we understand that based on some general comments that were made by council that they're looking for the applicant to be able to supply their own water to support that expanded log yard. And then second, the fire department and the city is concerned and wants to make sure that we have fire suppression resources available on site in the outside chance that a fire breaks out of that facility. We want our fire department to feel confident that they have the resources to maintain that fire on site so it doesn't spread to, say, for instance, the high school. We have our contract planner working with staff on that matter. And we're still looking for those assurances that they can supply their own water based on the needs that they've identified, as well as fire suppression surfaces. Again, on the planning side of things, to the satisfaction of the fire department, so that when we come in front of council, we can sit here and go, you know, we have those assurances in place. Yes, there'll become conditions of the rezone potentially. We need to kind of work through that. But that's where we are with that project. It is really because of those specific key issues as to why it didn't get wrapped up into our project.
What's the timeline on, for it to be handled separately? What does that look like?
You know, from staff's perspective, we kind of feel like we've been asking for the same information for a long time. And we're still kind of waiting for a fire suppression plan and reports that there's available water to serve the project.
Let's say that you got those things tomorrow. How far out could the process potentially be?
You're probably, depending on the timing, you're probably two subsequent meetings after that. So if I had that information in hand tonight, we would probably be scheduling it for the first meeting of October.
Okay. Do you have, you still have a little bit of time left?
There's some noticing requirements that have to come into it because you're documenting a certain environmental document, but, you know.
I'll give you 30 seconds if you have any follow-up questions or comments.
Not really. I didn't, but I appreciate the update on that. And we are still working on, you know, trying to get the water resources for that facility. And one, you know, question or comment I had was, if we did, you know, provide the information today like you were thinking theoretically, would, and there was a decision made on those parcels, would those, would that land use be included in this land use element update? Or would that have to come much later?
It couldn't because of the environmental impact report. Is that right?
We're looking to do this comprehensive update and have the opportunity to potentially bring it forward in October. But at any point in time, we're able to change this map. So it's not like we're, if we miss the opportunity in October as part of this comprehensive update, we could be here in November updating again based on your proposal or someone else's proposal.
No, that provides a lot of clarity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to us on this item? All right, I'm going to close the public comments. And just a follow-up, Dusty. I know that I've been part of many meetings over the course of years on this project. Do you know approximately how long we've been working on this land use update?
Two years.
Two years? I know it was.
And I also want to note that this, we have been very resourceful. And we have three grant funds that are supporting this project. And those, they're expecting the deliverables by the end of this year, those grant funding sources. So that is one part that is requesting us to take action.
I just kind of wanted to debunk any misconceptions about the fact that this might be rushed in any sense, because it's not rushed. We've been talking about this. We've had multiple community meetings, even during COVID. We had Zoom meetings. We had council calls. I feel like, yes, I am one of the members that is up for reelection, but I've invested a significant amount of time in research, education, and listening to my constituents on the matter. And I think that that's valuable. And if I saw that there was value in delaying a vote, then I certainly would support that. But I don't see value in delaying a vote where council has been very vested and put in significant amount of time. And the public has had an opportunity on many occasions to weigh in. And there isn't any, there hasn't been any significant controversy at each obstacle. Staff has been able to navigate a solution that has been palatable for each of the property owners. So, yeah, those are just some thoughts that I have. Any other council members? All right.
And then Mayor, we've gotten to the EIR section, and John's prepared to provide an overview of this one. Mayor's discretion.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
I want to be close to my computer. So what that can't do is.
You know what? I'll do that for you, John.
Maybe you can just have that.
Yeah.
My name's John Miller with Plan West Partners. The EIR was prepared with staff from Lakewood Associates, JB Lovelace Biological Consultancy, and Farr &amp; Peers and their subject matter experts who worked on the portions of the EIR that their experience and skills are specific to. Plan West prepared the remaining topics and the remaining chapters. The project in terms of SEQA is an update to the land use element, which is being evaluated as an amendment to the general plan. It's important because the land use element policies were developed to be consistent with the policies of the other general plan elements that aren't being modified. And the EIR relies on the existing general plan policies and the new land use element policies to lessen potential environmental impacts from implementation of the general plan. This is a long and technical document, and readers may want to start with Chapter 1, which gives a good overview and contains a table that summarizes each of the impact evaluations, identifies needed mitig, identifies, it provides a conclusion and identifies needed mitigations to lessen impacts to less than significant levels. The first slide provides a summary of the EIR process. When the EIR was released, that the comment period was extended to the 13th. And the notice extending the comment period said that the public could provide comments during this meeting, but that all comments on the EIR should be provided in written form so that we can ensure that we're responding to the nature of the comment. So the, actually, unless there are questions or comments from council you would like to talk about, that you would like to talk about specific EIR topics, I plan to provide a very high-level overview of the EIR focusing on the areas where there are potentially significant impacts and mitigations that would result in new policies. So with your, I'll go ahead and move forward with that. Okay. So the first, the first topic that had a potential environmental impact was in the aesthetics section, and it related to scenic vistas, views from public spaces like roads or. And so the, in order, so there's a potential that these scenic vistas could be affected by implementation of the land use element, especially within the sphere of influence areas, out Highway 20. So a new policy relating to development in hillside areas requiring that new development be sited and designed to retain the natural hillside setting and to encourage the clustering of residential units. It was included as a mitigation in that, upon adoption, that would become a new policy in the land use element. The second area where there was potential significant impacts was in the agricultural and forestry resources section. And it also related to the sphere areas. And within the sphere areas, there are undeveloped lands with prime agricultural soils and some lands that contain uses that would be considered agricultural uses. LAFCO has a very high bar for what they consider to be agricultural uses. And a new policy that we're titling annexation planning, which has the city discouraging development within the sphere areas while it's not within the city and protecting open space land and existing agricultural activities upon annexation. And this is a policy to help LAFCO appreciate the city's concern for one of its primary functions, which is to preserve ag land. The next topic area, there were quite a few potential significant impacts in biological resources. And the effects relate to special status species, riparian habitat, wetlands, and fish and wildlife movement. And there's a series of additional policies are recommended within the land use element to be, to enhance the policies in the conservation element of the city's general plan. So specifying the biological resource inventory that the city will be, will use as a tool in evaluating ministerial and discretionary development to ensure that the best available information is available when a project is being reviewed. Requiring that biological, a more detailed biological assessment is done prior to annexation and prior to the development in the South Hale Creek Opportunity Area, requiring that a biological assessment accompany development there. In both cases, especially with the South Hale Creek, a biological assessment would be done anyway. But this is making clear that it will be done. The, there's a riparian overlay land use policy that's a proposed policy in the element. The evaluation, the biological evaluation determined that it wasn't detailed enough to ensure that it would protect riparian resources. So buffer widths are specified, as well as some additional criteria. In addition, there's an additional policy to reduce stormwater-related impacts and to require the use of appropriate plant species in revegetation and landscaping efforts. There's the addition of a policy to require low-impact development, stormwater design standards, and the use of appropriate species in landscaping. There's a policy to minimize light pollution in riparian areas by direct, the way that the lights are directed. And then there is a policy, a unique policy to initiate community outreach to reduce impacts from pesticide use and from free-ranging cats. The gentleman preparing the analysis was made aware that the city really doesn't have control over this. And so this is initiating outreach with non-governmental organizations that may, that may do a better job of communicating that. The next topic area related to cultural and tribal cultural resources and some detailed policies regarding the inadvertent discovery of archaeological resources and avoiding impacts to tribal cultural resources through consultation. The next related to geologic and seismic hazards. And they're within geology and soils and within hazards and hazardous materials. The analysis relied on policies contained within the safety element, the draft safety element, which is not yet adopted. So mitigation measure is saying either prior to the adoption of the land use element or within six months afterward, that that element be adopted. And in the wildfire section, the evaluation identified that it was prepared prior to new law and that it should be revised to ensure that it's consistent with law related to evacuation and wildfire to lessen wildfire-related impacts. There's also for the greenhouse gas emissions section, the existing policy that makes reference to reducing greenhouse gas emissions include a reference to the state's thresholds, the state's targets. And I went through that fast. There's also, the, these topic areas did not identify potentially significant impacts. These were less than significant, water, wastewater, and traffic, especially relating to vehicle miles traveled. And just want to acknowledge that concern, we've. And just want to acknowledge that concern we've we've heard concerns about the city's use of surface water to accommodate the population growth that's that's planned within the general plan. And the the comment letter received from Brook Trails Township, so Laco staff prepared the water and wastewater. They they will be coordinating with Brook Trails Township on especially on the wastewater and these the ground water and the wastewater flows, wastewater volumes will be addressed in the final EIR. And that's that's the end of the EIR overview. Happy to answer any questions from council or listen to comments from the public.
Any more opportunities to ask about? Is there a middle line for that?
A side from Fluffy, I think, is pretty extensive.
It's not the first time we've heard it either, but thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wants to address us on this portion of the agenda item? Go ahead, Rob.
Robin Leeler, I'm a Willets city resident. I just want to say thank you. That answered so many questions that I hadn't even thought of. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments up here? All right, hearing them.
So the comment regarding water and wastewater capacity is not detailed at this point, but you're saying there's going to be a response to comments about it? Is that?
Yeah, the the comments will be responded to in the final EIR, and any needed changes will be revisions, corrections, errata will be done as part of the final EIR. And the Laco staff will coordinate with Brook Trails Township CSD prior to the completing the final EIR.
Because it is also true, if we theoretically could double the population with land use designations, we might not be able to double the capacity of the water supply and wastewater.
And that's a good point. The current general plan plans for a population of 7,500. The current the the proposed update maintains that 7,500. 7,500 correlates with with long time, long-term planning for infrastructure and services to the extent that population growth looks like it's going to exceed that 7,500. Prior to the to your next update to the general plan, you'd need to update the land use element. You probably probably need to update other things as well.
On the other hand, I just want to comment that we haven't really grown at all in the last 30 years. There's been 5,000, give or take a few, but the idea that we could in 20 years end up with 7,500 is probably unrealistic. I think it's really there's not a housing boom of that magnitude happening. So I'm not worried that we're going to run out of from, you know, of capacity that that quickly.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. We've received the presentation. We've had discussion about the general plan needs update. Our next order of business before us is the approval of the city council minutes for August 28th.
Mayor, we are actually pulling those minutes. There were some corrections that were made to them, and I had to.
Thank you. We'll pull those and bring those back at a later date. Are we in need of a short recess? No? Okay. All right, moving on, monthly activity reports. We have number fours. We also have no commissions, agency, and authority business. I am going to call for just a quick two-minute break, and when we come back, we will move to the city manager reports because we still have quite a bit of business before us, and we're at the nine o'clock hour. So two minutes, we'll make it a quick break. We're going to get started. All right, we're moving on to the city manager reports and recommendations. It is we're reconvening at 9:10. Verbal reports and the project updates. I'll turn it over to City Manager Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, we don't have any business items. The items I would address have been pulled into other departments, but as a continuation of what was expressed, at the last meeting, I'm going to call on Walter Kohler, Director of Services and Facilities, to give an update on some significant capital improvement projects that are ongoing within our community. And Walter, you want also, yep, I got the, do you want to talk about the PG&E project?
Yeah, I'll add that, yeah.
Thank you.
Walter Kohler, Service Facilities Director, Madam Mayor and City Council. As you know, there's a lot of work going around the city right now, not just our projects, but other entities. Let me give you an update, start with the 23 pavement preservation project, the one on Bosque Bell and South Lenora. We're still at 85% complete. We've got we expected to get it done mid-September. The contractor has been unavailable to finish the last seven to 10 days, so we're working on that. We're still anticipating being done end of September. It's about 85% complete. There's just some finish-up projects, some tidying up around some of the streets, and then mainly on Bechtel Road, some digouts. So that one, we're hoping to close out soon. 24 PPP is moving ahead very quickly. Argonaut construction has been moving very fast. Matter of fact, today, they were supposed to do 400 feet of digging out the roadway on Locust and filling it with a base, and they managed to do 1,000 feet and got it done in instead of three days, in a day and a quarter. So they're pushing ahead really quickly on their schedule, and that's pushing up other parts. They'll be working on Blosser Road later this week, doing digouts there. They're trying to work heavily on traffic control. There's going to be a lot of trucking. Today on Locust, we had probably 10 dump trucks going continuously all day, bringing in and taking out materials. But that section of the road with Locust Road around the school will be paved out on the 26th, 27th, so that area is really getting done soon. They anticipate the project to be closing out end of October for the 24 PPP, and they're moving ahead quickly on that. The other project we have is the underground utility project that's including sewer and water mains. Again, that's an Argonaut project. They've been working all over town. They're making really good headway. We're finding a few little anomalies and working on those. We're looking at one possible change order possibly to pave a couple of the alleys east van, excuse me, west van, and in that area there, it was set for patching, and we're looking to see how much extra it costs just to pave those fully up.
And potentially Muralane, too?
And Muralane, that area there and everything, yeah. They've been making, like I said, good progress on that. That one is expected to close out probably end of October, mid-November, and that's earlier than anticipated. We're about a month ahead of schedule on that. The other project, the Main Street Fiber Optic Project, has about another week and a half. They're getting close to Highway 20 right now, and they'll be putting in boxes in the next week. Most of their poles will be done this week and everything, and they'll stop with the underground boring, and they'll be doing cleanup on that project. But like I said, probably about another week and a half. The other project that we're overseeing and working with is with PG&E on Bechtel Road, the road widening and the sidewalk improvements. On Friday, they had a groundbreaking meeting with PG&E staff. Their public outreach has reached out to over 200 people in homes and businesses in the area and the hospital. They awarded the project to Gelotti Brothers. They're starting site work next week. They're doing staking and are bringing in equipment. And within the next two weeks, and we'll be putting out bulletins along with PG&E, giving updates on that. Along with that, that whole corridor is going to be very busy. Conservation Corps has approached us. They're finishing up in the next couple of months, and they're going to be doing paving work next week. So there's going to be a lot of activity in the area of Bechtel Road and East Hill. There's going to be quite a bit. They're already putting up signboards and stuff with for traffic delays. So that area will be in the next three months, pretty busy with Conservation Corps finishing up and the PG&E project starting up there. One thing about a lot of these projects, it's the time of year before winter when all these things are getting done, so there's a heavy, a lot of activity in the area. It does have the added benefit that, like on the Fiber Optic Crew, they've been here about five or six weeks. They have a minimum of about 10 people are staying in local hotels and eating at all the restaurants, and and all these companies are buying materials from local businesses. So there's an added economic benefit that we're getting from all this construction. It's it's inconvenient, but, you know, by the end of the year, we're going to see a lot of areas in town that'll have new paving, new sidewalks, and a lot of improvements that'll be really well, I think, well-received, yeah.
I have a question. As I was coming to a council meeting this evening, and I was driving down Commercial Street just right over here.
Yeah.
Quite a bit of gravel has come out of that work that they just did because we're getting we get significant amount of heavy trucks coming down. Did you notice that?
I noticed that what they were doing, it's called lowering the iron. There's a manhole there, and they were lowering it down. They're going to be grinding that section of roadway out. I told them they're going to have to repack it tighter and stuff and everything.
And just where we could have a traffic accident, there's quite a bit.
Yeah, I always saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they put a temporary base in there and stuff when they took down the manhole cover and stuff. I'm going to see what they can do because they'll be doing that one in about two weeks and everything, doing the grind down and the paving in there, so.
Will somebody be able to?
Yeah, I'm going to talk to them tomorrow. I saw that on my way over here and stuff, that it was loose, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to build on what Walter was commenting on. Two of these projects were we have contracted out to Argonaut, and they have commented that through their project managers and crew that they enjoy working with the city. We've been we have a great relationship. We've been extending tools and materials to them when they don't have it on site. It just keeps the job going along. They don't have to run back to a centralized location. They tell us any concerns, they're getting us updates. We're posting them as quickly as possible. And just on the utilities project, we had a lot of concern. Yes, it came in over the estimates for construction, but one of the concerns was was that the proximity of water mains to sewer mains, and a lot of handwork was going to be done in those excavations. And they have it's been proven true that those those excavations have been difficult, been complicated, but they have done a great job, and they've got in, done what they have to do. There was one little mix-up last week where they hit a water main, but that wasn't identified. But outside of that, just wanted to say that the project is going better than expected.
There was a lot of unknowns in that project just because of lack of maps and things and stuff that we did not know where sewer mains were, where water mains were. They tried to identify pre-construction where those were, and we've been working really extensively with them to make sure there's not a lot any cost overruns. They're working with us very closely, and the job is just going very smoothly, much better than we anticipated. It was supposed to be much more complex, and it's just being it's going really well. So I'm happy about that.
We did we did talk earlier today about the we had told the public that there was going to be some construction over by Blosser Elementary, and then it didn't happen, and people are taking some alternative routes, but then you I saw that you pushed out on social media today and hopefully other ways that we are getting to it.
They are. They changed their schedule, and part of it is a couple of times they've outrun their schedule. Their crew is moving so efficiently that they've gotten things done like today much quicker than anticipated. So at the end of the day, I had to quickly redo the schedule and everything for to get out for public notice again. Like I said, they're moving very quickly and efficiently, and they sometimes have been outrunning the schedule that they give us, and it has to be modified very quickly and everything. They're trying to get done before the weather turns and get it buttoned up and everything, have as least impact as possible. With schools, they're trying to just minimize the windows of time when traffic gets impacted, so that's been helpful. But it it's it's a little bit of an inconvenience, yes.
Just on that note, if property owners, residents, business owners have any concerns about the impacts on these projects, let us know. Contact us.
Did the school get an update change about?
Yeah, I've been keeping in touch with Mark Beebe and his staff and everything, yes, yes. Yeah.
I just want, are you saying that the Conservation Corps project will be completed in the next couple of months?
Yes.
Will they begin operating, you know, actually having the train news and staff on site?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I believe so. They that's what they've said and stuff and everything. The Conservation Corps, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're they're moving ahead very quickly and everything. I think they're doing final touches. Like I said, they're doing paving. We're supposed to have a meeting with the Conservation Corps and the State Fire Marshal because of flushing our the lines and everything with the fire hydrants and checking pressurizing everything up. So it's getting close.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Yeah, that's what I have.
All right.
Thank you, Walter.
You're welcome. Let me add one thing. Let me add one other thing. In January, in talking with PG&E and the Bechtel Road Yard, they are doing make one of the reasons we're holding them to getting the sidewalks done is that they want to do a major improvement on that yard. They're going to be building rebuilding the existing building, putting three buildings there and leveling the yard to make it a much more even surface. They're anticipating their engineers' costs, I just found out, is close to $10 million, and they're going to be submitting plans to us in January for redoing the road yard, interior part of it and everything. They're anticipating bringing 30 new staff to this area as service staff for this. It's a really critical yard for them in the north coast here, and they're anticipating moving 30 to 35 staff to this area.
Plus the 100 core members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was that?
How are they going to find housing?
Dusty? CCC has the dormitories.
Yes.
But for PG&E?
Oh.
PG&E can stay in our motels.
If they want to request to use on a portion of their property residential.
All right, well, thank you for that information. Department recommendations. First one is approval of a service agreement between the County of Mendocino and the City of Willets for after-hours police services in an amount not to exceed $18,000, and a budget amendment to fund 100.2000.65400 in the amount of $18,000.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Chris Dewey. I'm the interim police chief for the city, and I apologize upfront. I'm going to read a little bit just so I make sure I get all the details and I don't miss anything from there. Over this last year, as you all are aware, as the department has experienced some staffing shortages, and we've had limited availability of officers, especially during the nighttime hours. During these shortages, we've depended on the sheriff's office to help us with law enforcement services for the community. I think it's important to note that the department is working extremely hard to find new officers. We're really excited. One officer who, excuse me, who you already met, has been through the training program. He's working through the FTO program now, doing extremely well. We anticipate he'll be on his own as an officer probably around Thanksgiving, and so he's doing very well. We have two more officers that are scheduled to attend the police academy in January, and they're completely on track, and we have reservations for them at the Santa Rosa Training Center for them to go to go. And then and then finally, we have two candidates that are doing really well in their background process, and our hope is is that we might be able to hire them in the next couple of months and then maybe send them to the academy this next summer. So as far as new new applicants for the department, I think things are on the upswing. We're looking better than we have been in the past. But to address our current staffing shortages that have been going on, the sheriff now is being concerned is concerned because it's been a year now that he's been providing services to the community, and he's proposed a services agreement to help offset some of his costs associated with policing the city limits. And so over the last couple of months, the city attorney has worked with county council and myself to develop a services agreement to bring forward to council tonight. This services agreement would provide reimbursement to the sheriff's office for law enforcement services when they're needed for an immediate response, not for something that could wait a few hours until an officer could come, but just for the emergency immediate response calls. The sheriff's office has proposed a cost of $120 an hour for the service with a three-hour minimum, which would be $360 per call. We took an we took an analysis of the last full year from July to July of the calls for service that we've had and mutual aid requests, and we found that the sheriff's office has responded 50 times inside the city limits for mutual aid calls, and during the same period, we responded to 18 service calls for them when they 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 needed our assistance to do that. And so the cost of this contact, the cost of this contract, if you would just use this last year as a benchmark, would be about $18,000 in expenses for the year for that service. In creating this agreement, the sheriff and I have agreed that we would meet monthly to review our staffing shortage. to review our staffing shortages, we provide a schedule to them each month so that they'd be able to plan their staffing needs, and that we would look at our mutual aid assistance calls and, like, as an example, if a fire call came to differentiate that from an emergency response that happened at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning where the sheriff's office responded to assist us when we weren't available. And then finally, funding for this agreement would require a budget amendment to our police professional services account. And so, I would leave it there and entertain any questions that you have, or if the city attorney wants to weigh in as well.
I'm gonna let Councilmember Connie first.
Thank you. I appreciated the staff report. I just was a little confused why you mentioned that we provided mutual aid services to the sheriff's department 18 times, and yet, the contract is based on 50 calls responded to by them. There was no offset for the amount of times that we've offered assistance?
Well, in the paragraph below, so I tried to calculate what our maximum exposure might be, and then, in the paragraph below, that's where I addressed, the sheriff and I agreed that we would meet months a month and try to offset times when we responded to help them versus when they responded to help us. So, the $18,000 was kind of a high benchmark.
Okay, I see. So, there is the potential to lower that amount based on the amount of service that we offer to them?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
I just want to thank you, Chief, for, I know that I've talked to the sheriff already about this, and he'd mentioned he was talking with you, and so, I appreciate the work you took into this and fighting back as far as we've gone out and helped them, so I appreciate you, the due diligence you spent on this.
I think it is important to publicly thank Sheriff Kendall and the entire sheriff's office for their assistance. They've been wonderful in helping us and working with us. Sheriff Kendall is extremely supportive of the department and seeing our success move forward, and he's willing to keep this agreement in place as long as necessary until we can get our staffing built back together. That's really important.
And the conversations I've had with him, he's expressed, obviously, a hope that things get better here and that he's confident in your leadership.
I know that we're doing a budget amendment because we have an expenditure related to a service agreement, but I'm also recognizing that we should have budget savings for unfilled positions. So, would we then be able to offset that?
Well, you gotta also recall or reflect that we're also running overtime too. So, the unfunded, the unfilled positions are still being consumed. This, this is probably a joke there with attorney, that takes no mercy, but we'll keep moving on. Yeah, so, there is almost a wash between the overtime that we've been in, in crewing, but we're starting to lessen that as, as interim chief Dewey noted, we're bringing on more staff and getting a little better on our shift rotations applying them. What the budget amendment is doing is specifically setting aside a minimum of $18,000 for this specific purpose.
Maximum of 18,000.
Maximum, sorry.
Maximum. All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to address us on this item?
And just one other item, I tried reaching out to the county CEO this morning, I did not get a response back. I did pull supervisor hashtag aside and asked him on, if the council takes a positive action tonight, when will we see this going before the board of supervisors? Potentially first meeting in October, potentially a second meeting. I don't have confirmation yet.
Will we continue to have a meeting?
Yes, everything's still in place. You know, once, as interim chief Dewey noted, this has been a collaborative effort between himself, city attorney Lance, county council-
Yes, bringing in Lance.
And the CEO's office, so everything, everyone is aware of what needs to be done and wants to make this happen. There's gonna be no discontinuous, discontinuation of the service if something doesn't go with the county in the first meeting of October, the second meeting.
Okay, having heard no input from the public, there's no public comment, I'm gonna bring it back up here, this is an approval, an action item. So, what is the council's?
I would like to move, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with the county of Mendocino in the amount not to exceed 18,000, and amend the police department budget to fund professional services by 18,000.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries five zero in favor of budget amendment for $18,000 for after-hour police services for the county of Mendocino. All right, moving on to item 9B, discussion and acceptance of an explanatory addendum to fiscal year 2024-25 budget. And I'll turn it over to Manuel Roscoe, our finance director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council. Back in August 28th, you guys approved the budget for fiscal year 24-25, and during that time, you guys expressed a desire to have something that could be able to assess and, and give you guys a little bit more guidance on what is actually happening within the budget. So, right now, I'm presenting before you about five different attachments that I would like to put an appendant to the end of the budget. The first one is addendum narrative, which is an attempt to explain the accounting structure and exactly what the budget methodology is, including how the transfers go between the regular operational budgets and CIP, so. And with that, there's also additional ones of exhibit B, which is a fund breakdown and an attempt to show the difference between ACS and, and Springbrook, along with a departmental breakdown, which shows the original departments that were involved in the ACS system, and where they landed as a part of the Springbrook system. The last is the change in the account structure so that we could show how the accounting structure was in the ACS system and how it's changed within the Springbrook system. And the idea behind that was because there was two different segment breakdowns that was different in ACS that made it difficult for outside reporting to function, and so we got rid of that, and we made it more standardized account structure so that it can, it can work with other programs and things like that more easily. And the last was the notes to the line item changes, and that's basically a listing of all the different major changes that have occurred within the budget from prior, you know, from the prior years into the current budget. And so, what it is, is for each line item or account string that is associated with a major change, you can look up in that addendum and see the notes behind exactly what it is that's behind those numbers. So, with those five changes, I hope that you guys, and we can add that to the back end of the budget so that we can have that ready for you.
Thank you for all the extra hard work. Any comments from guys?
Thank you. The notes are really what I was after. There was almost too much information in that front loading part, but as somebody who is a real communications nerd, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I think you heard, you heard us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does this need to be approved?
Yes, there's a resolution to approve it, to just to add it to the back end of the budget.
And just for clarification, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This does not change any line item figures that you adopted previously in the budget.
Correct.
Yes.
We're, we agree. All right, is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on this item? All right, Councilmember Strong?
I'm in the group of the explanatory addendum to the 24-25 budget, as presented.
I'll second.
All right, Strong made the motion, Connie seconded the motion, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor, I agree.
Yes, the motion carries five zero to accept the explanatory addendum. All right, next is the adoption of resolution identifying the proposed project list for SB 1 Road Repair and Accountability Act for fiscal year 2024 and '25. These are all action items, just for clarification.
So, this one is replacing the resolution that we did in August. There was a miscommunication with the funding source for the SB 1. There are two actual funding sources for our project that we're proposing for 25, for the PPP, and this is one of them. The second one, the larger one, will be actually, it just opened up in August, and we have till November still. So, these are going to be two different funds that are going to be filtering into the 25, the potential 25 pavement preservation project. So, this is just a clarification that we had to have with the agency. We're still applying for the other one, that just opened up in August, and it was just a miss, it was just a miscommunication. We're just, this is 128,000 that were guaranteed in funds, 128,000, 125, and then we still have the potential to add the other amount, the 400,000, to our pavement preservation plan. We're still working on that. And the plan itself is being put together right now. We're in the initial stages of getting pricing on that for overall project costs.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Sandy O'Farrell is here too, if we have any questions from Laco, who's, helps us out with all our funding sources, and she has some, she can answer to.
Does the council have any questions?
So, this is just housekeeping, to make sure that the previous resolution correctly-
Correct.
identifies the funding-
It was just, it was, there's so many different fund sources, and it was, yeah, it's just clarifying it and correcting it, yes.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move staff recommendation.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, Vice Mayor Gonzalez made the motion, Stransky seconded the motion, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries with five zero, and we adopted the resolution identifying the proposed project list for SB 1. The next order of business is approval of the City of Willets Local Road Safety Action Plan, completed September of 2024.
So, this is an update that we've, all the, MCAG has been working on with TJKM. This is the new local road safety action plan for '24. It's an update of the one that was last done in 2022. It will be used for funding sources, looking at safety projects that we'll be applying for funding, and things that we can do corrective action within the city to help on traffic safety. So, it's pretty comprehensive. We'll be looking through this and trying to identify projects and identify, you know, how much funds and what we're gonna need to do to get some of these projects done. You may want to look through it, it's, it's quite a bit of reading. It's, it was very comprehensive, it's been gone through, like I said, this is an update from two years ago, so there's a lot of new information, and Brian, looks like you do-
I do, but continue.
Yeah, no, that's it, that's all I have to say at the moment, yes.
So, yes, councilmembers, one of the big addition to this addition, I think it's on page 66 or 67, I don't think they have numbers in here, we worked at the 11th hour with MCAG's consulting engineers through Laco to make references to the value of the East Commercial Street Corridor Plan. The elements in there for pedestrian facilities, improve connectivity throughout the city as well as through the corridor. That was a big component that we wanted to add to this document because what we're looking to do, ultimately, if the council decides to adopt it, we're gonna work with MCAG, we're gonna work with Laco, our partners, terrain landscape architects, we're gonna pursue a federal Department of Transportation grant for Safe Streets for All, and this allows us to bypass the planning program and jump right towards the construction slash implementation grant phase, which we're looking at the notice go outs, the notice of the project descriptions and application deadline, March, April of next year. It's sometime in May. So, that will use the benefit of this document, not only the base documentation associated with the data of traffic incidences and the severity of those, but also the East Commercial Corridor, because that updates, updates all our planning components.
I have a question for you.
Okay. First, my first question is, why does your binder look so much thicker than ours?
He's special.
No.
Did we not get all the, all the dirt?
No, you got all the stuff that was pertinent. This is all boilerplate that informs that go to all the other entities. Ours actually has what you really need. That is just boilerplate, yeah, it's, it looks like a phone book.
Okay, I just didn't want to miss anything.
And the areas that, yeah, Brian was talking about, the plate starts on page 63, no, excuse me.
If I should read it, I can make a copy for you.
Okay, I really read this cover to cover, I'm not kidding, I thought this was fascinating.
It is, it's got a lot of great information and everything, and it's gonna be helpful going forward in the next couple of years, like Brian said, with funding and getting projects moved along, yeah.
And just as a reminder, we already received about $36,000 to implement some intersection improvements that would identify back in '22. Walter and his team are looking to get that going as well.
Right.
We're getting, already seeing the return on this.
Actually, that, those were initially proposed in 2019, and it takes them a while to do it, so we've gotten, we got it like three months ago, two months ago, and for some smaller traffic safety problems and stuff that we can address, but we'll be getting more, yes.
All right, so one thing that I did want to say is that particularly in the back where it breaks down all of our previous traffic plans, the Safe Routes to School Action Plan from 2017, the Traffic Safety Evaluation of 2010, the Main Street Corridor Plan, I think there's a lot of stuff in here that has actually been accomplished by the city over the years.
I believe so, yeah.
And I think one of the things that the city is not very good about is touting its wins, and I think it would be super cool if at some point we could come together with some sort of thing to release to the public of, look at all these plans that have been sitting here for years, and look at what we've done, look at what we've achieved, because we hear a lot from community members, oh, you guys are always planning, you make more plans, you don't do anything, you just make plans, they sit there and they get dusty. But when you start reading these plans, you go, oh, we did that, we did that, we did that. And so, we need to celebrate that and say it loud and proud to the community, we did that, we finished these, we achieved this stuff.
Yeah.
So, that's what came across to me when I was reading this.
I agree, and by the end of the year, I'd like to do a year-end review of the projects we have accomplished during the year, and catching up on things and stuff so that people know, it's true, a lot of things go on behind the scenes, some of these projects are planned for years and people don't see forward movement, and some of them are getting blasted through very quickly, and I'd like to be able to present that at the end of the year as, you know, to show you what we have done.
Your tax dollars at work.
Exactly.
This is what's happening, yes, absolutely.
And we have a lot more between all the work that Dusty has going on, all the park improvements, the next two years, the city's gonna see a tremendous amount of improvements that I think the public are gonna be very pleased with.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of things going on.
And then, the other thing that I wanted to mention, and I'm sorry that Chief Dewey stepped out, but sitting on the traffic committee and sitting on MCAG and reading this really reinforces to me how important traffic enforcement is in our community. We read through these statistics, and it's pretty harrowing to realize what an impact traffic collisions are in our community, particularly in our intersections. When we had interim chief Connor, who had been a motorcycle officer for years and years, we know that traffic enforcement was important to him, it was a priority, and he had his officers out there regularly making stops, not writing citations, but giving people education and warnings about why they need to drive safely and why they need to change their, their behavior. I don't feel like that's been as much a priority under Chief Dewey, and I hope that our incoming interim chief will recognize that it is a priority for our community, and that if we do approve this plan, what we're saying to our community is that we're really trying to make improvements on road safety for everyone in our community, because it does affect individuals, it affects businesses, you know, and people have lost lives because of bad traffic habits.
I agree, I think with this document, and we have been working with the Willes Police Department in putting out the radar trailers and everything in areas that we see as hotspots, it helps a bit. It will help and stuff with the Traffic Safety Committee when we get together and talk about things that are a concern to the population, where they've brought forth, you know, problems and everything, that we can sort of address those and stuff. And going forward, this is gonna help, this gives a lot of data about where some of the hotspots are and what we need to look at and everything, yeah.
And I know Councilman Stransky has stressed this, the nicer our roads get, the faster people go. So, we really are gonna have to make sure that we're following up on these road improvements- So we really are going to have to make sure that we're following up on these road improvements with, you know, real messages out to the community, just because the road is fixed doesn't mean you need to lead foot it.
It's true, it's true, yeah.
One item for the council and for the general public, if you're in a neighborhood and you want to see that speed trail deployed, let us know, we'll get it out there.
Well, like Greta, I read this cover to cover, and this is the second traffic study that I've seen since I've been on the council. And this, this particular one, like I was looking at around page 11, references, I don't know, page two, references 2020 to 2022, when we know that traffic was low. And I remember seeing a prior study, and so I was thinking about that and the changes. And one thing that kind of stood out to me, which is on page 20, is about the majority of the injuries were related to speeding at night. And so I'm just wondering if what kind of enforcement we're having in the hours when it begins to get, get dark, if most of our enforcement is focused on daytime, but yet the data shows that most of our accidents are speed, speed-related in the evening, and maybe there needs to be some extra focus on that time.
I think seeing that data is going to give us something to go forward with and stuff, and look at that with the police department and stuff, how we do enforcement and stuff, that that might be a critical time to look at those kind of things, yes. I have to thank Sandy O'Farrell, she was very, she did a lot of work in cleaning this up with MCAG, there were some mistakes they made, and there was a lot of things that she's put a lot of time into. I think this document has come out very well. One of the biggest corrections and misconceptions, they had a lot of the accidents attributed to Willets are actually right outside city limits on, in Brook Trails, but they're, you know, right outside city limits, but it's always equated as Willets. So we're talking about then working with the Sheriff's Department too, to see what they need to do, CHP outside our areas, so that we do not get dinged for some of those accidents and stuff, because the original document had us much higher. They had us as one of the highest accident rates in the county, because of some of this, there's been a few fatalities up in Brook Trails, but they were attributed to Willets.
Yeah, we were talking about that with the Transportation Committee.
Right.
How our insurance rates are higher than
So we made sure that
What seems fair because of that Brook Trails intersection.
Right, but we'd like to work with them in conjunction too, to see how those problems can be solved, and work together on them, and see what we can do, yeah.
Okay.
So we're just looking to, you know, get this approved, and I think going forward, this is just going to be a very important document.
It's a very thorough document. All right, anybody from the public want to address us on this item? The public hasn't read this item, please do. Could we, could we add this document a link on our website?
Sure.
That would be wonderful.
Right, that's
A link to it on our website.
Also, just want to explain the reason some of the data is behind, is that they get, data is reported from police departments and Highway Patrol to what's called the Switters' reports. And they go from here to the state to their data folks, and it takes a while for that to get back, disseminated back in the form, so it's always running behind. Whenever you get your Switters' report data back, it's always
Sounds like our sales tax reports.
It, it works along the way where it, it's always, there's a delay, so that, that's it. And then, just because it's speeding, you have to keep in mind that the basic speed law could be that five miles over the speed limit, or, or even going the speed limit on a rainy day is technically a speeding accident, even though you weren't exceeding the speed limit.
Oh.
And so sometimes, even though the cause of the accident could be violation of the speed, basic speed law, it, it may not necessarily equate that the individual was going way over the speed limit, it could just be that for the conditions present, he was, he or she was going over. But that contributes to the causal factor of the accident. I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Time to pay public comment.
Yeah, we can go back to public comment.
I'm sorry.
I passed it, but I don't, I want to hear from the public as well, so go ahead.
Just a few seconds, it's actually not that critical, I was just wanted to point out that, good evening, everyone, my name is Matthew. I just wanted to point out in the Agenda Summer Reports, which are just totally awesome, you know, it says the goal for this is actually to maintain and improve infrastructure water, wastewater systems, and I just think that was a, probably a clerical mistake.
No, if you keep reading it, it says public facilities and streets.
Oh, so that's, that's the connection there?
Yes.
Okay, what about parking? Is it, this is not part of that, parking issues like with
No, this is just strictly safety and accident, yes.
Just double checking, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the accompanying resolution on the Local Road Safety Action Plan for September 2024, and, yeah.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
All right, Stransky seconded the motion, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez? Yes, the motion carries for the approval of the City of Willets Local Road Safety Action Plan.
Thank you, Sandy.
All right, next is to adopt a resolution to amend the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARPA, project budget table to allow for the asbestos remediation and flooring upgrade project at the community center. And again, I'll turn it over to Walter Collin.
So part of the ARPA project list, we had, there were improvements to the community center renovations, one of them was flooring. As we looked into it, the age of the floors, we had to do materials testing, hazardous materials testing, and we discovered that they contain, most of the flooring contains asbestos. And in order to remove that, we have to hire a licensed remediation contractor, which is not easy to get in this area. We had two, two of them come up, one was about 48,000, one was 24. These were unexpected costs that we were not anticipating, that the material would have asbestos, it was not included in our original estimates. After we do the remediation, we looked at alternatives of what we could do to preserve the floors and have it a really viable surface that's both safe, maintenance-free. The current floor right now is very dated, it has a lot of maintenance issues and some safety issues where it's buckling up. So we've looked at doing a grind and polish on the floors, we investigated and looked at various, we had a company, a couple of companies come up and give us samples, and looked at places that they've done in Yukai and commercial spaces, and it's a very viable option, and it's, it'll, it's very long-lasting, it looks good, and it's very safe and very maintenance-free, but it's exceeding the original cost that we had. And we're looking at increasing the appropriation we had for the flooring to cover the additional cost for the grinding down and refinishing floors, but, and the remediation cost for the asbestos.
Okay.
Question? Considering that it's the ARPA funds?
Yeah.
If we increase this, what are we taking away from this?
Well, this is what I was just talking to Manny about, he's the, we had it that we were going to be deducting from the land use implementation plan and the recgro facility improvements, pulling 30, but you're saying we should
Well, for the whole project, we should probably increase the entire project of grinding down and removal of the asbestos and everything, so
We're still pulling from those other pots of money, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, and we'd just be, we would just be augmenting the language a little bit in the resolution, just say, state that we're increasing appropriations by the full amount of the contract itself, or how much it would cost to do the remediation and also the flooring.
Rather than pulling it from the other ones?
Yeah, because, oh, that's, it is pulling from the other ones, like I said, but it's just we need to be able to have that.
But we don't have to specify it.
Yeah.
Well, no, yes, we, we have to. The way we have this set up with the council, we were locked into a adopted budget for projects.
Yes.
And like we did with the food bank, we want to tap into the two larger lump sums, which is the recgro improvements and the plan implementation, which is kind of a catchall right now. And the goal is to take 15,000, 150, to equate to 30,300. We already allocated 50,000 for this project. But unfortunately, with the asbestos abatement, which is going to be 24, and the flooring work, which is going to be 48, so that already exceeds a 50,000. And so we want to bring in 30,000.
30,300.
30,000, and there's a contingency of 10% there.
Right, because we don't know what the floor is going to look like when we pull up on the actual tiles, there might be some repair, yes.
And as I mentioned at the last go-around with the food bank, you have the discretion to move the money around right now within those defined projects, and that's what is before you tonight.
Okay, any
I just want to clarify the recommended action, so that when we make the motion, it's real clear what we're doing. And so the, you're asking us to approve the transfer of funds from the ARPA distributions in order to fund the asbestos remediation and the grinding and reflooring, plus a contingency factor. It seems to me it needs to have a total number there.
Not to exceed 30,500.
It's what?
It shows you what the fiscal impact is, the full amount is 80,300, and what they're asking for is an additional 30,000.
I get you there, okay.
30,300.
And just for one other item, the reason why we had to bring this at the last minute, the flooring contractor literally needed to know by the end of this week to get the crews scheduled to meet our time window, because after middle of October, that facility is booked weekdays and on weekends, for the holidays.
We've been holding off on renting it out this month, but we've been having a hard time getting a contractor up here for just prices on it and stuff, there's just been limited people who can do that kind of work. So we're trying to work within a very tight window. If we lose the window, we wind up doing it later, early next year, I believe, and stuff and everything, yeah, we'd have to set aside, we need about three weeks' time to get the work done.
Do you have a comment? Yeah. I initially supported the idea of enhancing the community center, because it is the piece of city infrastructure that community members most often use. However, I have a really hard time with the idea of spending $80,000 to redo the floor. I also really dislike being put on a timeline of you've got to pass this and it needs to happen in two days. I don't do business like that, I don't accept a contract from somebody who tells me I have to sign it within two days, and I don't think it's a good practice.
I think we
I'm not happy with this.
Yeah, we set the timeframe because we blocked out that time several, a couple months ago, and they're trying to work within our schedule, and trying to fit it in, in the time, we haven't taken any reservations for that space.
I get that, but I think the fact that the community center is booked through Christmas after this, you know, little window, indicates that our community members are still interested in renting that space, regardless of whether we put $80,000 into the floor. Seems to me we could do better.
It's not so much the aesthetics as the safety. It's starting to break up, there's tripping hazards.
And that's why we're taking that, we have to grind it down, there's places where it's uplifting, the floors age, it's showing seams and steel coming up through there, and that's part of the grind down process, they'll be smoothing out. One of, it's, it's not as much aesthetics, that is a portion of it, but the safety factor, it will be increased tremendously. Right now, it's had a lot of maintenance issues, it's very slippery, there's a lot of tripping hazards in there, and this would eliminate all that, it would just be a flat surface, a flat polished surface.
I get it, and I like polished concrete.
Yeah.
I think it's a great material, it's safe, it looks good.
Yeah.
Works, $80,000 is a lot of money.
Yeah, and 25,000 of that is the remediation work, unfortunately, whatever flooring material we go with, originally, we're looking at doing a similar tile, if we take those up, that has to be through a remediation contractor for asbestos, we cannot do that ourselves, that has to be through a licensed specialist who does that, and they'll seal that whole area off and do it. So that was one of the biggest costs that we incurred, that we did not expect originally, yeah.
So could I have, can I ask, Councilmember Connie, if, if we chose not to do this project right now, would you still support it for the same dollar amount next year, or is your hope that the cost would be less, and would you be okay if we didn't do the project? Are there any concerns about there being asbestos still there? I'm trying, I'm trying to see some, I'm trying to follow.
I guess I would be interested in knowing if there are other alternatives that would be less expensive, yes, I understand you have to remove the asbestos tiles, is there something that would be less expensive than going with the polished concrete? If you put down other tiles or something that isn't asbestos-based, obviously, but is there some way that we could narrow this price down? Because I just, yeah.
That there are, I mean, you could do epoxy floors, things like that, that just don't last as long. This one basically will be maintenance-free for next 20-something years. Part of what they do for the next five years is each year they come out and polish it out. It's a maintenance issue, I mean, anything we put down, an epoxy will scuff up and it'll start wearing down. There's a back area there that has an epoxy finish that has not worn well on the old concrete. We were looking at something that would be very maintenance-free for the amount of usage it gets. It is a high cost, but when you amortize it out over the amount of years and how little maintenance it's going to use, and the safety factor, it, it's more cost-effective in the long run, for just doing the polished concrete and everything. Like I said, there are lesser systems of flooring we could use, but they just wouldn't have the longevity, and they would just be much more maintenance-intensive.
Strong, could you have a comment?
I was going to make a motion, but
I haven't heard, yeah, I'll come back to you. Is there anyone from the public that wants to address us on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back up here.
The comments first, but I would make a motion to approve the requested SCAP recommendation.
All right, we have a motion.
You know what, I'm going to second it, because I think, I was a little concerned, but the fact you said 20 years, I think I'll probably be off the surf by then soon. I think you sold me there.
All right, Strong made the motion, Vice Mayor Gonzalez seconded the motion, I'm going to call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
No.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez? Yes, the motion carries for one, I respect your dissenting opinion. All right, moving on to department monthly reports, presented at the second meeting of each month. So are there any departments that have anything additional to report at this first meeting? No, good. I'm looking at you like, are you sure?
We define something.
No, 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 we're moving on, hearing none. Oh, Kathy.
No, it's quick, I would just like to wish Vice Mayor Gonzalez a happy birthday tomorrow.
Just counting 20 years.
That's why I had to add that in.
A happy early birthday. And then Kathy, do you have a birthday this month?
Mine's on Monday.
I knew it. Happy early birthday to you as well.
And Dusty's is on Sunday.
I was going to say, and Dusty's got one, and William.
She just asked out last week, till the floor breaks.
All right, all you youngins, we got to move on. Okay, City Council announcements, communications, and reports. Councilmember Strong, I'm going to start with you this evening.
So no complaints in September, but we need the first week of October. EDFC is only having the board meet quarterly now, and I think that's not until towards the end of October, and similarly, this Hall of Waste Management Authority is going to meet, I think the very, I think it's not until October, or it's the very, very end of September, so I don't have any agencies to be toward.
All right, Vice Mayor Gonzalez?
Had LAFCO on Monday, and we had a, I'm just trying to look at, make sure I've got the right, can you pass me for a minute?
Yeah.
I would, I got a bulletin from the city about the, Councilmember Connie had contacted somebody to get rid of the trains, and more power to you for doing that, I appreciate it very much.
I didn't want to get rid of the trains, just the derelict train cars.
Which is regressing.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Connie?
I attended the museum advisory board this morning. We are trying to create an addendum to the bylaws, however, we were unable to pass them today because we did not have enough voting members present. The whole idea is that we're trying to amend the bylaws so that we can have a smaller quorum, since we regularly have members who don't show up. So now we're sending out a
So now we're sending out a special notice to all of the museum advisory board members to please show up next month so that we can pass this change in bylaws so that moving forward, we can actually get business done when people don't show up. That was fun.
All right. Vice Marquezal?
All right. We had a workshop on the Casper South Water District Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence. I learned something new that most of the time when you have a special district, in order to be a board member, you have to live in that district like we live here in the city to be on City Council. This district was formed in such a way that you just have to be a property owner and don't necessarily have to live there full-time. And even with that provision, they still struggle to keep a board. But it was something new I didn't realize existed, I thought you always had to live there. And the only other thing in consequence is we basically approved our response to, our Lapco's response to the grand jury on the Minnesota Coast Health District, sick but returning to health is the title of that grand jury report. So ours was one of the respondents on that grand jury report, so that's all I have. Oh, and I have, on Friday, I've got Lead of Cities up in Eureka, so I'll be driving up to Eureka for that meeting.
You want to be able?
No.
All right. Jerry and I have both been serving on the Major Eye Bond Oversight Committee with the school district, and we learned that we're no longer serving.
Well, I know a couple of months ago.
Okay. So...
Two months ago, I think.
Yeah. So that, 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 more to come on that. Let's see, there's, there's been a lot of policy advocacy. I would imagine that other councilmembers have been receiving quite a bit of information as well on ways that we can impact our community and advocate at the, the state and the federal level. There's been lots of interest. I received an email, and I have a meeting tomorrow with a reporter from the San Francisco Gate, and he is intending to come to the Willets community and do an article on how our community is managing post-bypass. So if you'd like to participate in any way, I'd be happy to, to hook you up with, with information on how to reach that particular reporter. And if you hear of him out, out in the community, he's supposed to be here next week. So just want to put that out there, and yeah, I, I think that's about it. MTA has just been a whole bunch of, just taking care of everyday business. There's a lot of everyday business that's happening right now. Let's see, Good and Welfare. Who has Good and Welfare this evening? Go ahead.
The Well Newsletter is out now, for September and October, and I have a couple of two extra copies if anybody here would like one. And the main event that we're promoting right now is the Candidates Forum on the Fourth Sixth. We're going to have all the candidates for the City Council positions, for the, the Willets Unified School District, and for our representative to the County Board of Education. So all three of those are contested races, and they, they'll all be, all the candidates will be there except one who is going to participate remotely. And there's some other articles in here about other stuff going on in Willets. And I think I'll just mention that my uncle Ray is featured at the Grace Hudson Museum. He's a fabulous landscape painter, if anyone gets down to, to Ukiah and goes to Grace Hudson, it's wonderful, it's a wonderful exhibit.
He's an amazing artist. Worth seeing.
Ray Strong, well, he died a few years ago, but he was a hundred and one. He painted his entire life.
Maybe I should take a painting.
We have our Hometown Festival coming up, I think it is September twenty eighth? Eight?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. All right, September twenty-first, and I would imagine that the city is participating in a traffic plan for that day.
Yes.
Okay. So just mark your calendars for the fun and festivities and a traffic...
Harvest Fest.
Harvest Moon.
Yeah.